I'd like to call this meeting to an end, please. Roll call.
Mayor Yanis.
Here.
Councilmember Reese.
Here.
Christensen.
Here.
Anderson.
Here.
Ammon.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Docken.
Here.
Fagerly.
Here.
DeBleek.
Here.
Nine present, zero absent.
Would you all please stand as we say the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? I would like to add one, and that would be the Charter Commission between nine and ten, about nine and a half, if you would, if we place it in that area. Consent items? Do I hear a motion for those?
Move for approval.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the consent agenda as written. All those in favor, is there any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, say no. That motion carries. We'll move right into the open forum. Do we have people scheduled to speak? Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. My name's David Herser. I live at 1501 Country Club Drive Northeast here in Wilmer. I'd like to make a comment tonight about the agenda item from last week's Labor Committee. The agenda item was full council involved in labor contracts negotiation. But before we get going, today's weather really has had calls for a big thank you to those city workers and others patching the asphalt on my street. It's hard to imagine a hotter task on a hotter day. Their efforts are truly appreciated. Thank you for arranging for that. Managing the city's financial operations is one of your responsibilities. We might say it is possibly the most important duty you have. When compared to the federal government, you are faultless. Too bad Washington isn't closer. Eighty percent of Wilmer's operating budget expense consists of salary and benefits, most of which is set by labor contracts that are negotiated every two years or so. Wilmer has an ordinance stating the city administrator has the responsibility for negotiating and settling labor contracts. Our administrator has solely sat at the bargaining table with our attorney, effectuating those duties for the first three labor contracts. One contract remains, the department heads, who are not represented by a union but have joined together as a bargaining unit for negotiating strength. These are the very folks that our administrator works with on a daily basis and is in close contact every hour at work. I urge the council to add some council members to the negotiating team. It seems only logical to have a negotiating team of more than one person representing the taxpayer. I know the council has previously established a strategy, but to have one person sit across from a group of union members, coworkers, does not provide a sense of balance and a perspective of fair play for the taxpayer. Public perception is everything, and while I'm not suggesting any wrongdoing has occurred, the process can and should be above reproach. A second issue has been clarified just today. I, our administrator, agree in that negotiation meetings are public meetings. I thank her for that. She rightly claims, however, the law does not require an open meeting notice to the public meeting. I urge the council to establish a procedure so the public can know when a public meeting is going to be held. Common sense says that for a meeting to be public, the public ought to be entitled to some manner of knowing it is to take place. Complying with the spirit of the law is called for and is in order. Hiding behind insufficient words in the statute, not detailing how to tell the public, is no excuse for shortchanging the taxpayer. And my final comment, you could resolve tonight, is for you to order that when a labor contract is signed and final, it be posted on the city website. New website, new information. Our Wilmer School District does a fine job of communicating. All five of their labor contracts are posted for all to see. No secrets, transparency, and a spirit of openness in government. It does build trust. Thank you for your time. I look forward to you addressing these issues.
Thank you, David. John, did you want to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I wouldn't speak tonight, but I noticed in the packet for this council meeting that the...
Who are you?
John Sullivan, 508 Thirteenth Street, Wilmer. When I looked at the packet, I noticed that for the labor meeting that was held last Wednesday, Mr. Herser's and my own presentation to the committee was not included in the packet, and they were passed out for inclusion. And I think they should have been, so there's about four of you council members that weren't there. And I sent a correct copy because as I told you there, I was in a hurry. I had to go to VAs. But what I'm talking about is, number one, the department head confidential employees. And the legal definition of a bargaining unit, as I found, is a group of employees represented by a labor union or other group engaged in collective bargaining with a company or industry, also called a collective bargaining unit. The City of Wilmer Department Heads and Confidential Employees, I feel, under the above definition, have no right to call themselves a bargaining unit as they are not represented by any union or any agent of a union. I also feel as do others that they should be dealt with separately as to wages and benefits, and not as a group. The basic contract for each could be much the same, however, each should have their own contract with salary and benefits defined. A case in point is why one department head that's only been here for a few years is getting the same wage that other department heads that have been here for 30 years or more are getting the same pay. I don't think that's fair to either the new party or the ones that have been here forever. They all do a good job, but I think that's a discrepancy. And I don't think any of the other entities in town, like Genial, the hospital, even the Wilmer Municipal Utilities, pays all their managers the very same salary. I can't believe it. I know the hospital doesn't, and I'm sure Genial doesn't, because they've got a lot of different departments, a lot of different managers, yet that would be not a good thing to do. I think you need to have a criteria and salary schedule with steps and ladders for each position, for each department head and confidential employee. I don't think any of you, and in fact, many of you have told me that you have never seen, let alone read, the 2010 contract that's in effect right now. You approved it, probably much like you approved the Ashmeay contract this year with just a brief synopsis in your packet. You didn't see the whole contract. And maybe the city administrator says you all have one now, or you've got one then. But I don't think you have, because I know in the packet, when you voted on it, you didn't have this. All you had was a short, two or three paragraph synopsis of what the contract was. And if you'd have read the contract with the department heads back in 2010 when you approved it, I think there's some sections in there that you would not approve. And I think this all came to light when the car issue came up last year. And there's been a lot thought about that and a lot said about it. And it's just, changes need to be made now, not down the lane. Also, you should not be waiting for other unions to come to terms with a contract. This unit of employees need to be dealt with now on an individual basis by a committee of council members as a whole, and the city administrator, and ratified by the council. The mayor could also be involved in these negotiations, and perhaps even pick a couple of you council members to serve with the administrator in these negotiations. I think it's been a year and a half now, and they still haven't got a contract. And I think, I don't think that's right. I think it needs to be dealt with, and I think it's your responsibility to do it. If the city, I don't think it's your fault that it hasn't been done, because I don't think you knew enough about it. But be that as it may. So I just wanted to restate what I said last Wednesday and make it a public issue, not a public issue, excuse me, but on the public record, as it wasn't otherwise. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sullivan. Some of your concerns and some of Mr. Herser's concerns will be addressed as we get into the Labor Relations Committee report. Thank you again. At this point, I'd like to introduce Mr. Bradley Peterson from the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities.
Excuse me, you have a hearing before that item.
A hearing?
Yes, you have item eight.
All right, let's go to item eight. In new chapter, five, article four, special assessments. And who's to speak to that? Kevin?
Mayor Yanis, members of the council, you have before you an ordinance creating a new chapter dealing with the special assessment deferments that we offer our citizens following an improvement project that's held in the summer. This is a discretionary deferment and directed by the city attorney to adopt an ordinance clarifying some of the circumstances. This is certainly for the senior citizens that we have been doing in the past, the disabled, active military, and these hardship deferrals. Inside page two, B, one, we are setting some household limits by this ordinance developed by the Housing and Urban Development at a threshold called the very low income limits, and they will be adjusted from year to year pursuant to their studies. You have before you on your table those income limits as they list for one- and two-person families. We will follow that scale in the future by using the threshold of very low income. Currently, we deal mostly with one- and two-person families because they are senior citizens, some disabled, but because of a disability that happened early, it could be larger family size. Those income limits will be verified with IRS documentation. Although you may realize we've been doing it in the past, this ordinance is needed to clarify those discretionary deferments, and it is staff's recommendation, following testimony, to adopt order number this ordinance and have it effective for the current improvement project, and with that deadline being October 31.
Did I open the hearing?
No.
Sure, we'll say you did.
Okay. The hearing is open, and if there's any comments from the public? Hearing done, I will close the hearing and open it up to the council. Councilman Reese?
I got a question, Kevin. The income limits, are they statewide?
They're countywide.
They're countywide.
Their studies are down to the county.
Down to the county.
Yes.
And I'm trying to understand this, because the numbers, I don't understand, very low income, 50 percent, extremely low income, 30 percent. What's the 50 percent, 30 percent? I'm trying to...
Their subsets are broken down from the very, from the low income limit. The low income limit is being on the bottom side. It's rather a high threshold, and the committee reviewing this looked at that versus the Kandy High County statistics for their median family income and so forth, and thought that was too high.
Right.
So...
That was going to be my point. It seems high.
Well, I agree with you, and if you just followed the HUD standards for low income, no wonder the statistics are so high, because that doesn't seem very low.
No.
So they were wrestling with what category to take, and following current median income of Kandy High County, the recommendation, and the document is drafted and published at the level of very low income.
All right. Thank you. Further discussion?
Thank you. Couple things. You know, that income level was discussed twice at the Finance Committee and talked about, and we thought that it was appropriate. Now, the only thing we're changing with our procedure is we're setting by ordinance, and we're putting in income levels. Everything else stays the same from the way we have been handling it? Is that correct?
I believe that is correct.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I move approval on this.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to adopt and sign a number and order a final publication.
Question.
Discussion.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. My question was on the verification right above item B on page two, that it says the council may limit the deferment to one year or to a limited period of years, and may require regular verification by the applicant of the continuation of the exceptional and unusual circumstances that justify the deferment. What type of verification? Are you looking at W-2 forms, verification employment, to what degree, and income tax forms?
At this point on, I would look for exactly what they supply to the IRS.
Okay.
Now, some people paying Social Security will have a document. Some people at certain levels say they haven't filed income tax for 10 years on Social Security, but they have a document to prove what they've got sufficient enough to be under the threshold to file IRS statements, so we'll use that.
And the deferments might be for a period of one year, or you're looking at extreme to, as to how many years, the maximum?
Well, the maximum, the system is deferred with interest for 10 years matching the bonds.
Right.
And then it no longer is deferred, and when it changes hands, it has to be paid in full. It may not always start at 10 years. Maybe when they have this special assessment, they are 62. And they wait three years, and then when someone in the family hits the age of 65, they qualify, and they could come in and defer the remaining seven years. Most of the disabilities that you would have, you'd have an income, or you'd have a Social Security documentation that that is permanent, so we'd never adjust that.
Okay.
And this is drafted so that you would have the option if something happened.
Okay.
If you couldn't make bond payments, maybe you'd reconsider something down the line. So the option is here for you. But we have not invoked that at all, to my knowledge, in the last 28 years.
Okay. Would it be better if this was to be more clarified as to what type of documentation has to be presented, or is this, if we don't agree with an individual on this deferment, could that be a litigation issue or not? Or has it ever been? I don't remember. It hasn't...
It's never gone to that. We, in a one-on-one, in my office, we've normally found sufficient documentation to prove it. Now, I have denied some because it was at a dollar amount, less than $200, and I just didn't see justification for dividing that over a bunch of years. I mean, that's, there needs to be some threshold. We don't leave it here where we should start this, but at this point, we don't have just some common sense rules there.
Okay. Well, I was just wondering if the attorney, our attorneys have reviewed this, or if that should be maybe included, or more items should be listed as to verification, if that would help you or help staff in the process and help anybody else, so there isn't a confrontation on what information is needed. If you haven't had any problems, I guess it's redundant, but I was just wondering if clarification might be, if it was a little more defined.
I think they would meet our request because they want to defer it. So they will get the documentation that we asked for.
So we're in the driver's seat?
Yes, we are.
Okay. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chris Wilson, did you have a question?
No, just a comment, and I see it's in the proposal here. It has to do with the very low income limits. Just wanted to make sure it was for that particular year, and not, this isn't going to be a constant here. It says in the very low income limits adjusted for that year, so that was answered my question.
Councilman Docken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, how many individuals do you think will apply for this, will be eligible?
Five or six a year has been a consistent number.
Five and six a year? Okay. Thanks.
Councilman DeBleek?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kevin, you had said this is interest-bearing, they pay the same interest of the bonds for 10 years of the deferment?
That's correct. They match the bond, but the senior citizen deferments are always higher because the principal never is reduced annually. So let's just say someone has a $5,000 assessment. When they're all done, they may pay $7,000 with the interest. A senior citizen or disability would probably pay 8,500 total bill, but it's just set against the property, and when the property changes hands, it's to be paid in full.
And that deferment can go on for eternity or...
You could be 65. One member of the legal owners could be 65, and they could live to be a centurion in the same house. Don't have that too often, but it's a possibility.
And then you said five to six people a year take the deferment?
That seems to be a consistent pattern.
Have you ever looked at what the percentage of the total people eligible to take a deferment, what that five to six is?
No, sir, because the county property list that we put out, and let's say there was 200 names this year, there's no age, there's no age indication on that whatsoever. I'd have to know everybody, and I don't.
Okay.
Further discussion?
Thank you, Kevin.
Just a comment.
I'm sorry.
Maybe, I made, we're in the driver's seat. I mentioned that. I just want to make clear, this is a good issue. This is a good thing to help people out that are in deferment, and I support it. I just want to make sure we're in the driver's seat so that nobody is going to be taking advantage of the situation. In that case, I'd feel very comfortable, but I support this. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Councilmember Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Ammon.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Docken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBleek.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. At this point now, Mr. Peterson, we can call you up, and from Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Mayor, members of the council, my name is Bradley Peterson. I am with the law firm of Flaherty and Hood, and of course, we do the legislative advocacy and the organizational management for the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities, of which Wilmer has been a long, long, long time member. As you know, we try to get out and visit every one of our cities after the legislative session and give you an update on what transpired this last legislative session, and try to give a little bit of insight in terms of what might be the issues that will be arising here in the next year or so. And so just to remind you, the Coalition represents approximately 80 cities across the state, and I like to say it's everything from Grand Marais, which is about 1,400 people, all the way up to Rochester, which of course is over 100,000, and just about everything in between. We work primarily in five issue areas: local government aid and property taxes, economic development, annexation and land use, transportation, and environmental regulation. And so what I passed out is our 2012 legislative session report. It goes in depth on a number of issues that we worked on this year on your behalf, but I'll kind of try to hit the highlights, starting with local government aid. And as I'm going along, if you do have questions or comments or things, please feel free to interrupt me. Not a problem. Of course, this year, if you go back to actually 2011 and the resolution of this special session, which set the state budget, of course, we had the state government shutdown for several weeks, followed by a special session. One of the things that came out of that, of course, was the elimination of the market value homestead credit, which created a lot of chaos within the property tax system. You had a lot of levy of value being shifted between properties because of this exclusion that they created on residential properties, so you had more of the levy being shifted on to commercial industrial property, apartments, those types of properties. And so there was a lot of consternation at the time. What we see here is, and this first graph on the first handout here, the 2012 property taxes increased more in greater Minnesota cities. No matter what property category you're looking at, whether it's residential homestead, apartments, low-value CI, high-value CI, in each one of those cases, the property tax increase was greater in greater Minnesota cities than it was in the metro area, along with an overall average property increase of 6.6 percent for greater Minnesota versus 2.6 for the metro area. That bottom graph is just sort of an LGA payment history. We'd like to remind folks kind of where we're at, where we've been, starting in 2002, which was really kind of the high point of the program, right before a series of cuts. That dotted line represents inflation. You can see from that, if we were keeping up with the inflation factor that is typically used for state and local governments, the program would be about $817 million a year. We have been essentially frozen for the last several years at $425 million. So this year, the real thing that we focused on, since it was not a budget year, and there was a state surplus, and so there wasn't this threat of unallotments or reductions that we've seen in past interim years, was actually looking at the formula. So the formula has been essentially frozen. People have just been kind of getting what they've been getting since 2010. And the formula was scheduled to sort of click back on next year, in 2013. And you can see actually, the other side of your graph here, what this would mean for Wilmer specifically. So in 2012, Wilmer received a little over $4 million in local government aid. You were scheduled, because the formula was going to click back on, to receive about $3.8 million, a difference of approximately $196,000, less in 2013 than you got in 2012. And this is for several reasons. One, because the formula was built on actually being funded with an extra $100 million. That was one of the outcomes of the 2011 special session, was that the LGA allocation was permanently reduced, which is essentially what it had been for the last several years anyways. And then also, the way the cuts had been done really upset the balance. And of course, we've had a lot happen in the last three years in terms of property values across the state and various communities' property tax bases, which would have shifted a lot within communities around. And what we were seeing was, most of our greater Minnesota regional centers, like Wilmer, like Bemidji, like Winona, like Rochester, were scheduled for pretty significant losses once the formula clicked back on. And so what we did was, we looked at the situation, said, okay, it's not good, first off, that a bunch of cities are going to be all of a sudden losing a bunch of money. The state legislature and the governor have both established task force working groups on local government aid that are due to make a report in 2013. The tax chairs in both the House and the Senate have basically targeted 2013 as a time when there will be some review, revamp, change in the formula, because it is a budget year. And so we thought that the most prudent thing to do was to sort of get folks to 2013 without any kind of loss, if possible. And so we had, there were a couple of possibilities there. Our proposal would have been for communities to get either the higher of their 2013 formula amount, or a 5 percent increase, whichever was higher. That would have cost the state about $31 million. It would have recognized that cities have taken a significant chop over the last several years, and would have provided some stability to those communities. That would have been $31 million. Option two was another one that we thought would have been okay, was, okay, freeze everybody at their 2012 level, so nobody loses, but those communities that are expecting an increase, which were a few of our greater Minnesota communities, and then a number of the older suburban communities, give them their increase in 2013. That would have been about $12.5 million. million for the state to come up with. What the legislature ended up doing, and what the governor ended up signing into law, was for those communities under $5,000 that were expecting an increase, they got their increase. Everybody else got frozen. That cost the state about $2 million. So the long and the short of it is, we are at the same place with most of our communities next year as we are this year. And so while we weren't able to get an increase, we were able to actually prevent communities like yours from losing a significant amount of money and bridge ourselves to that point where there is going to be a very significant discussion about what happens with the local government aid formula. The two groups that have been put together to look at this, the governor's group and the legislature's group, CGMC is well represented on. Their governor's group is made up of a number of mayors from across the state, and we've got five or six of our mayors on that group. The legislative group, which actually has been working since 2008 with some interruptions in their time, has a number of legislators, a number of elected officials, including one or two CGMC mayors. And then each organization, major city organizations, so the league, us, the metro cities, and the small cities also have a representative. And representing us on that group is Steve Peterson from our office, who is our policy analyst. He's the guy who knows the formula inside, outside, upside, downside, left side, right side, and can really explain it in very good depth and detail, and understands the mechanics of it very well. So he's a good person to have on there for us. So, as I mentioned, next year will be a big year. It is a budget year. There is going to be all this discussion of doing some reform. But one of the challenges that the legislature will have to deal with, even though state receipts have been coming in fairly strong and above forecast, we saw the news the other couple of weeks ago that the state closed out June with an extra $336 million for the year. We are still, however, looking at a fairly significant deficit for the 2014-2015 biennium. So the Office of Minnesota Management and Budget puts together these projections. These are their numbers. Their forecasted amount, just all things being even, is that we will have a shortfall of about $1.1 billion. If you added inflation into that, that'd be about $2.16 billion. And of course, we borrowed all that money from the schools during the 2011 special session. If you want to pay the schools back, and account for inflation, and just have the regular deficit, you're looking at about $4.5 billion that either is a shortfall on the part of the state or that the state owes somebody, and that hasn't been otherwise accounted for. So there will be some challenge there. But the good news is, at least in the short term, that receipts have been up. And that, you know, if we're looking at a $1.1 billion deficit, you know, it's certainly a lot better than we have been in the past. But it still certainly presents some difficulty for the legislature as they do their work. On top of all of this, the governor is talking about doing overall tax reform, looking at the income tax process, the sales tax, and property tax, and trying to figure out how we can balance those out. So the Commissioner of Revenue has been working on this very diligently. They are very serious about this process. Tim Flaherty, Steve Peterson, and myself met with the Commissioner of Revenue just last week to kind of get a sense for where they are looking at going. And they haven't come to any conclusions, but they will be bringing something out in January, probably, when they unveil their budget proposal to the legislature. And so you will probably see a fairly comprehensive overhaul of the state's tax system. That could mean any number of things: broadening the sales tax, lowering the corporate rate. I think with the goals of providing some stability in our revenue system generally, with addressing the property tax issues that we're all keenly aware of. And then I think, at least from the governor's perspective, they will want to raise more revenue for the state than is currently being raised. And so I think that will be an overlay to the other, just sort of general discussion about budget and local government aid that we see, you know, every biennium. So that was, I think, one of the most significant things we worked on. One of the other priorities for the CGMC this year was economic development. And this really came out of a lot of discussions with our members last summer and last fall, where we really wanted to look at, what can CGMC suggest to the legislature to enhance greater Minnesota job growth and retention? And so we really made it a priority focus. J.D. Burton in our office is our economic development person. And so we worked with our cities, we worked with local EDAs, local chambers of commerce, individual businesses, whoever we could kind of get together and bring forward all ideas to spur job growth and retain jobs in greater Minnesota. We convened a task force of these folks, and they came up with really five areas that they wanted to work on. One was a greater Minnesota internship program, to connect students with companies in greater Minnesota. And what it was designed as was a tax credit. It would help pay the costs of paying that intern. It was capped at $2,400 per intern position, and would connect young people with communities in greater Minnesota and businesses in greater Minnesota. The second thing that we looked at was an enhancement of the Angel Investment Tax Credit. This is a tax credit that was passed in 2010, and would focus investment in new innovative startup committees, companies, and help companies get the capital that they needed. And what we were seeing with this was, that we're now sort of in the second year of the program, each year, the Department of Employment and Economic Development has put together a report of where's the money going, because we should be measuring these things. And what we were finding was, that only between 10% and 13%, depending on the year, of the investments that were being made through this program were happening in greater Minnesota. And so what we proposed was, rather than the 25% tax credit on those investments, we suggested that for investments made in greater Minnesota, we add a little premium and make it 40%. The next thing we did was, we looked at the Minnesota Business Development Infrastructure Grant Program. This is a grant program that's been around for about 10 years. It was actually started by the coalition. And what that does is, with funding through the state bonding bill, issues grants to communities to help pay the infrastructure costs of new business development. We asked for a bunch of money for that. We ended up getting $6 million there. We also proposed a greater Minnesota interchange program that would help fund the cost of interchanges that would be involved in spurring greater Minnesota. And we also had a new jobs training program. Of those five things, the internship program and the Angel Investment Tax Credit gained the most traction. And so as the session went on, those are the two things that we really focused on. I like to think of the legislative session as a big funnel. You start with a whole bunch of ideas, and as you go down, you get narrower and narrower, and you get to what's actually going to hopefully become law. And those were the two things that made it to the end of the funnel. They got put into the final tax bill that was passed by the legislature. And unfortunately, for other reasons, that bill was vetoed by the governor, along with a lot of other local projects and things. There was a few things that the governor objected to that were beyond our issues, and so we were essentially collateral damage. But I think what this did, this whole economic development focus of the CGMC this year, was really gave us an opportunity to engage with the legislature at a different level and on a different topic other than local government aid. We spent a lot of time on local government aid, and this was a great opportunity to engage our legislators on something different. And we got a lot of very good response to this program from legislators in both parties. One of the things that we are doing, because this program does take additional resources than what we generally generate through the coalition dues, is we have created the Economic Development Partnership Program, where we are encouraging local businesses, chambers of commerce, EDAs, to commit some additional financial resources to help with the research that's involved in putting these types of programs together, the promotion and the PR work that's involved in terms of taking it out to our communities and doing the media work that supports every good advocacy effort, and then also with the lobbying. And so we had a number of EDAs and chambers of commerce from around the state join us this last year. We're looking to even enhance that going forward, because we think it really is an important, needs to be an important focus for the coalition going forward. The next major thing, and again, if you've got any questions, please feel free to stop me. Next major thing that we worked on was some issues revolving around budget and tax constitutional amendments. There were a couple of proposals at the legislature that would have required either a supermajority in both the House and the Senate in order to pass a tax increase, or would have in some way limited state spending from one biennium to the next. And the coalition has a long history, actually, of being against doing budgeting through the state constitution. We think that's the legislature's job. And we also believed that these efforts would be very detrimental to greater Minnesota communities. So one of the things that we did was, we did a lot of research, looking at what the experience of other states were. And so let me tell you, if you liked the shifting and gimmicks that the state used to budget with in 2011, then you ain't seen nothing yet, because that has been the trend historically in these other states that have these types of constitutional amendments, is that they rely on more shifting, more budgetary gimmicks, more tricks. Because the priorities don't change, it just constrains the state's ability to deal with them. And so we came out pretty strongly with a number of other local government groups, the league, the counties, the townships, many school districts, as well as various nonprofit organizations and organized labor to oppose these efforts. We went around and talked to a number of newspaper editors about this, and we were really able to kind of tamp down any discussion of these constitutional amendments pretty quickly. And I think on a bipartisan basis, folks at the legislature realized that it was not a good idea. Just a couple of other items that we did some work on this year, but again, there's more detailed in here on annexation and land use. We worked with Senator Carlson, who's from the Bemidji area, on an issue relating to municipal detachments. That's the opposite of annexation, when land reverts from the city back to a township, and helped cleaned up that process. We worked with the league and the Minnesota Association of Townships on that, and made it a lot more clear, and hopefully, in many cases, a lot less expensive for cities to go through that process. And we also stopped a fairly bad township association bill that essentially would have prevented a lot of annexations from going forward, even the simplest ones that are the annexations by ordinance, where for whatever reason, the city, there's a number of times in law where the city can simply pass an ordinance to do an annexation. So for instance, if the property is entirely surrounded by the city, or if the city happens to own the property, as is sometimes the case with public works types of facilities that a city might have that just happen to be in the township, or if a property owner petitions the city and says, I want to be part of the city. The legislation would have essentially allowed a town board to veto that. And then also, there was some bad legislation around a township election that would have allowed, in certain contested case annexations, those that go to an administrative law judge, a township would have been able to circumvent that process by saying, oh, let's go to an election, a referendum, but the threshold is that the annexation can't go forward unless 75% of the township and city residents thinks it's a good idea. Township election on those issues is something that existed about 20, 25 years ago. It was done away with in law, and I think it's been a good thing. Also, on the area of the environment, we worked with some St. Cloud area legislators, actually, to make the water conservation rate statute a little bit more flexible. There was a mandate in state law around how you set rates on your water bills for conservation purposes. And basically, we were able to, working again with the league and some other groups, make that a little bit more flexible to give cities different options for encouraging conservation. A couple of upcoming events. Just next week, coming up, is our league, or our, I'm sorry, our CGMC conference in Owatonna. And there's a handout in there that goes through the agenda. This is, of course, where we debrief in more detail the legislative session, and then honor those legislators and city officials who have been particularly active on behalf of greater Minnesota communities over the last year, and as well as retiring legislators. And then our fall conference in November, which is really where we get into setting the policy for the next year. And next year's going to be a big one. We, of course, have all 201 legislatures up for election this year. And in many cases, and I think certainly affecting this area, we have new legislative districts. There's been a lot of reshuffling of legislative districts, and so you could have entirely new legislators representing entirely new communities. And so that's something that's coming up. And so we will unpack the results of the election at our fall conference as well, and try to figure out what it means for us going forward. So 2013 is going to be a big year, big budget year, big year for the LGA formula, big year for continuing our efforts on economic development, and a big year for doing the work of continuing to educate legislators around our issues. You know, in 2010, there were approximately 50 new legislators from around the state. There will be at least that many this next year. And so I think one of the big things that the coalition does is go out and meet with them, hopefully before January, in between the election in January, with our cities, to talk to them about our issues, and let them know why their advocacy on behalf of you is so important. So with that, I will pause for any questions or comments. And again, I really appreciate you having me out this evening, and appreciate your continued support of the coalition.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for being here and for your report. I heard you speak earlier about tax incentives, tax credits, grants for businesses. And I know the federal and state government are great at doing that, and that's just to retain businesses, or to get new businesses to start up or stay here. Wouldn't a better policy be to scrap all that and just treat all businesses the same and have the lowest tax rate of any of the states? I just think it's silly to offer incentives. I mean, we have these tax jobsy zones and try to enhance people. We shouldn't have to do that. Somebody wants to start a business. I saw a chart several months ago, it was this past winter, I believe, when I was down in Arizona. It had the 50 states and the best places to start a business and the worst, where was it, Minnesota? Bottom five. And I think some of it is because of the tax situation. I know some of it is. I think you know that too. But couldn't they work on a policy, or you enhance them, or get them to work on a policy of treating all businesses the same, and get those tax rates lowered? I mean, that's what drives jobs. It isn't government. Government doesn't drive jobs. It drives jobs away. But if you could have a tax policy the same for all businesses, instead of all these incentives, I mean, they waste so much time down there at the Capitol, trying to invite somebody here, grow your business there. And I just think it's, could be easier, but it doesn't make sense. And then revenue and spending, state of Minnesota, do we have a revenue problem or a spending problem?
Well, it depends on who you ask and what your priorities are. You know, if you look at a chart of all of state spending, what you find is that over 70% of that is health and human services and K-12 education. And, you know, obviously, we've got a lot of folks getting older, and that's especially true in greater Minnesota. And then we do have also an increasing, you know, school population in the state. And so, I mean, that is a question. But I think it all comes down to, you know, what do we as a state prioritize? You know, some of these line items that get, I think, a lot of discussion in the state budget are really not that much money. You know, we spend a lot of time in this state talking about local government aid. You would think it was 30% of the state budget for as much attention as it gets, and it's less than three, in terms of the local government aid that goes to cities. And so, you know, I mean, that's a discussion for your state legislators, for the greater policy folks. I mean, you know, there are folks who certainly think that we have a spending problem, and others who look at it and think, well, we've got a revenue problem. You know, one of the measures that a lot of folks look at is a report that comes out, I think it's every two years, called the Price of Government Report. And what it does is basically look at, if you add up, you know, all the costs of government against Minnesota's state GDP, as it were, that number has actually been falling pretty steadily over the last 10 years. I think when they first did the report, it was at something like 18% of our state GDP was tied up in government. Now it's 15 or so. So I mean, it's, again, it comes down to what are your priorities?
Sure. Speaking of LGA, $4 million to the city of Wilmer is a big chunk of our budget. I mean, we're used to it, and we depend on it. We count on it. And that's where it's gotten to. Could you give the public, and maybe us, a three-minute history of LGA, so people know where local government aid came from, when it started? Just a brief one?
Sure. Yeah. Well, local government aid began essentially in the early 1970s with the so-called Minnesota Miracle, where we, you know, overhauled our entire tax system. And what you saw at that time was, there were a hodgepodge of local sales taxes, local tobacco taxes, you know, various local taxes and fees. taxes, you know, various local taxes and fees, and the need, the issue that was trying to be addressed was basically disparities amongst communities. You had communities aggressively offering incentives to business to lure them from one community to the next, and it all came down to who had the tax base to support services for this type of development. And I think we reached a breaking point in the early 70s where we said, "That's just not a sustainable model." And so, what happened was, the state, in addition to taking greater responsibility for local school funding, also then created a sales tax. It's why we have a sales tax today. And the idea was, the promise at that time, was that a portion of that sales tax then would be sent back to communities in the form of local government aid, and at the same time, communities were then not allowed to levy their own local sales taxes and other types of taxes without special legislation. And so, it's really, you know, was when we decided that we would fund government services more through sales and income taxes versus reliance on the property tax. Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Very good, short explanation, and I thank you, Brad. Thank you again.
Absolutely.
Further questions or comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you for the excellent presentation.
Absolutely.
Enjoyed that. Do you think that the forecasted $1.1 billion deficit for the next biennium is a little bit overly optimistic? I mean, then it might not be higher.
I'm not an economist. Certainly, there are a lot of things in between now and the next forecast in November, or the February forecast, which is the one that they're going to use to build the budget. There's any number of things that could go wrong between now and then. You know, Europe could continue to deteriorate. You have, you do have this issue in the federal government in terms of the so-called fiscal cliff that we're looking at, with the automatic cuts that are scheduled to be made, as well as the changes in the Bush-era tax cuts, and the inability of the federal government to decide what they're going to do with that, probably until after the election. And so, I don't know. $1.1 billion might be optimistic. It's really, really hard to say.
On top of the things you've mentioned, both of which are on my radar, Europe and the automatic spending cuts and tax increases scheduled to go into effect for the US government, for the federal government. In addition to that, now we've got the weather.
Yes.
You know, 70% of our food products are dependent on the corn, are directly related to corn prices, and they're going to go up, and I think we're going to start seeing food increase, you know, prices at the grocery store, and we, these deficits keep going up, and they want to raise people's taxes. You know, citizens are either going to be paying higher grocery bills, and then looking at, you know, revenue, hunger of government for revenue, and that's higher taxes. And I look at the, I think the country is, from what I read, it looks like we're pretty well-divided politically, and I guess that would forecast possible, you know, more gridlock in Washington, D.C., which then would mean these automatic spending cuts and tax increases would stay. I don't, if we have the kind of gridlock we've seen recently, I just don't, you know, not as optimistic about some of these forecasts. You know, I don't like deficit forecasts, but I think they're a little bit overly conservative. I think it's going to be higher.
Yeah, well, and one of the things too, that, I mean, we have seen also is recognition of that, in that a lot of these rating agencies have been sort of downgrading their forecasts in terms of projected growth. Both the agency that Minnesota uses, the IHS Global Insight, you know, they have reduced their growth target for the state for the next several years. So, yeah, there are a lot of challenges coming forward, unfortunately.
And I look at, you know, we've got that thing out there called an allotment. We could get, we could get cut, and Dayton will be around, so, and he doesn't favor that, but I don't know, that's, might be, I don't know, a little concerning. I just think those deficits are a little bit, going to be a little bigger than what we think they are, so, thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks for driving out here, Bradley.
Absolutely.
Appreciate it. Hope you're enjoying your stay. This is great to get this input from you, an update of what's going on, because we get bogged down in our day-to-day meetings, our weekly meetings, and so I appreciate you giving us an update of what's going on with legislature. By any chance, do you happen to know which House tax bill this one is on the Greater Minnesota Internship Program?
The, the individual bill or the bill that it got, I don't recall which bill it got rolled into. It was the one that Dayton vetoed at the very end of session, that had a lot of the high priority items for the legislature in terms of the reductions of the statewide business property tax, Big Mall of America project, there were a lot of local projects in there, included also our, our two items. But that's something that I think we will be, because we did get such a good response to it this, last year, is I think one of those initiatives that we will pick up again in the next legislative session. You know, the Minskew students groups were very enthusiastic about it and actually came out and in support of it. We worked closely with the higher ed community to try to fashion something that worked with them, and so we made a lot of progress, and unfortunately, like I said, became collateral damage to other issues.
Was this similar to the same bill the legislature approved back in the mid-'80s, when we had tough economic times? I know there was incentives for employers to get half of their wages reimbursed for, if they maintain employee for six months. Is this similar, or?
It's, it's similar in concept, in that it did pay a portion, you know, but this, of course, was for college interns to work for companies, and so what it did was it paid a certain percentage of the stipend, up to, I think it was $2,400 per employee, and it had to, you know, be somebody who was working, you know, through an internship for college credit, and were also getting, getting paid for it. And so, it's similar in concept in terms of an incentive to hire those types of employees.
Is it similar to the apprenticeship program that they already, they haven't?
You know, I'm not as familiar with the apprenticeship program, but I think this was, this was specifically focused at greater Minnesota, first off, and then, you know, was sort of going to be sunsetted in two or three years, kind of see how it works. It was relatively a little amount of money, less than $2 million, to do this program, at least at the level that we conceived of it, so.
Okay, so the limitations of which type of businesses are set in this bill?
It would just be firms in greater Minnesota.
Just?
There were no limitations in terms of type of firm or size. It was really, fairly open-ended, actually.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
Brad, thank you for being here. I hear you talk about the representation to, you could call it greater Minnesota, rural Minnesota, and over the years, the changes of redistricting has, and I'm talking long-term, lessened some of the representation to the more rural areas, and then we've had decline within our rural areas, the smaller cities. Wilmer's been quite lucky in the fact that it's a regional center, and we haven't felt it like some of the smaller cities. But when you even talked about the LGA and how the small cities were not affected by the LGA cuts, we need somebody like the coalition, and I just wanted to thank you, and you can carry it back, for the work that you guys do. We need that representation, and we need somebody to be standing up for us and talking to our legislators. Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion or comments? Councilman Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for coming tonight.
Absolutely.
I was intrigued by your comment that priorities don't change. I'd like for you to explain that to me a little, not right now, okay?
Sure.
I was off to a League of Minnesota Cities meeting in January, and at that meeting, they passed out a document that was written in 2010 by the league, and I think Dr. Carl New helped put some of it together. And within that document, it says, "Unless cities do things differently by 2015, every city in the state of Minnesota will be broke." Now, that's never found its way onto the West Central Tribune, and maybe tonight it will find its place there. But even worse, unless we change, in other words, we now live in what I term a new normal. We're broke, okay? And getting broker, if there's such a word, okay? So, we have to change the way we deliver services to our citizens, and we have 800, and I think the league says 55 cities, that's a lot of cities, to deliver services. And one of the things that they say that we need to do is to start community dialogue with the citizens who we work for. And everybody is saying this, the league is saying, "It's coalition, the citizens," I forget what the term they have, there's lots of groups that are saying, "We have to do things differently." But no one is implementing these changes. The league has, and I plan to use it on my reelection this year, a community conversation with the taxpayers to say, "Hey, these are our options. They're, I mean, do you want more tax increases? I doubt that many citizens want a tax increase." And if it's coming from the state or from the federal government, a lot of that is borrowed money. I heard the other day that for every new dollar that the federal government spends, they borrow 42 cents of that. It's a lot of borrowing, and we already have a $16 trillion deficit. So, I guess my point is, when you say that priorities don't change, I think in the new normal, priorities gotta change, have to change, because we have to deliver services more efficiently and more effectively. But anyway, maybe you could explain what you meant by that?
Sure, well, and the meaning of my comment was that while I think everybody recognizes the truth that you just laid out, and everybody talks about it, and everybody says we're in a new normal, when push comes to shove, certainly what we've seen at the state level is that, you know, there was a lot of discussion about, you know, we're going to have to rework things, we're going to have to combine services, we're going to have to change eligibility for services, we're going to have to change state pensions, all of this is not sustainable. But what happened, what did we do? We funded, essentially, this is the state, all of the same activities that we've been doing for the last 40 years, oftentimes at a very similar level. But what we did was, instead of being honest about either how we would raise the money or how we would get the money, or saying, "You know what? We just don't have the money," the state borrowed a whole bunch of money from the schools, and also leveraged future payments from the tobacco settlement, which is going to cost us a lot of money in the future. And so, my, my comment about how we still seem to be recognizing the same priorities is a statement, I think, about political will. Political will to identify what are the priorities that we think are important enough to fund, and do we have the political will to reduce those services, change those services, or do we have the political will to be honest with the people of Minnesota and say, "We are going to raise this tax X amount to pay for these services that we've identified as a priority." And these are the decisions that you guys face every day, in terms of the political will to, to do things. And, you know, I'm sure you have a lot of these conversations where you walk away very frustrated, thinking, "Well, gosh, what have we really kind of done here?" Happens at the state level. And so, my, my statement about priorities was, "We're not doing anything different. We're just not being as honest about how we're doing it." So, hopefully that.
Thank you. I think you're exactly right for not being honest.
Any further discussion, comments? One other comment. We're hearing of local government aid, you know, there was a time when local government aid was going to be temporary. I've heard that it was eventually intended for the smallest of small cities, and now we haven't gotten dependent on it. And my personal view is that if it comes down to sharing, sharing our tax dollars with the smaller communities, I strongly, this is just my personal opinion, is I would strongly encourage the money be given to the smaller cities, because we've seen this mass exodus, when you look at the census from western Minnesota, and, you know, we've benefited from it. But I don't want to benefit. We don't want to benefit. We still want those small communities out there. We still want the job growth out there. And if we have to shift, my personal thought is, I would rather see it shifted to and share to the cities that need more, to maintain their small towns and those small-time jobs, because they're getting eaten up. And I don't know how that, I know we, you talked about this individual, Stevens, somebody or other, who was the guru on the, on the, the way the policy is, is written on local government aid, but, you know, it shouldn't be that complicated. It should, it should just come down to common sense. And if we can somehow simplify it, I'm sure it started out very simple, but I think through the years, it's gotten quite complicated. And now, how do you undo the complicated? Or it should be a simplistic form to help those in need, just as we do with everybody else in this, this state. Just a comment.
Sure.
I don't know how you're going to accomplish that. I'm sure you have a very tough job, but I wish you the best of luck.
Thank you.
Thank you again, Mr. Peterson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and council, please enjoy the rest of your meeting tonight.
With that, I think we'll move into the Charter Commission. Sean, would you like to come up to the podium and introduce yourself?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. I am Sean Mesky, the Chair of the Wilmer Charter Commission. First, let me say thank you for putting us on the agenda this evening. I was going to be unable to attend the next meeting, and the meeting after that gets us very close to our August 23 ballot, or ballot submission deadline, and so, appreciate the opportunity to come before you this evening. Back on May 24, the council, you had a work session talking about the charter. The members of the charter found that very, very productive. We had a follow-up meeting from that on June 21, and we basically took your agenda, and that became our agenda. And so, what I have tonight is the draft from that meeting, and I'll just quickly go over the pieces that were on your agenda, that we had some dialogue over. The first Park and Leisure Services Board, we kept that in, thought that the city parks are significant enough that the commission believed that that need to maintain. We did have discussion about the memberships of those. We didn't change any of the language that we had in that before, so that's the same. We did, however, you had in section 2.08, which is the descriptions for the city administrator and the city attorney, we did have a lively discussion on those items, and most of the commission believed that those items should remain in as they were printed. However, I will tell you that there was also a very, very openness to, anytime you would like to make a change to that, that we would have special meetings to address that if it made sense. And so, because when the charter was written, those positions didn't exist in the city, the division of labor and explaining what people's job descriptions kind of were and what people were responsible for was something that made the, the commission say to keep those in as they were printed. The rules of the council, section 2.11, there, per the suggestion from, actually, our, that workshop, we basically have it open to adopt a, at the meeting prescribed in subdivision one, an authorized set of parliamentary rules with several examples of different rules that you could adopt. And that we also added at the end of that, that those rules that were adopted by the city council would be applicable to all other commissions, boards, and committees. So, whatever you opted for, the whole city structure would be using the same rules. So, that is a change. And then, perhaps the most significant change comes in sections 402, 4.05, and 4.04. Those were, of course, the majority, supermajority numbers. Again, after a very lively discussion, and I think we made it very clear that we are approaching, as we move forward in this process, once the charter draft was not approved at this body unanimously, then we had other options, and one of the options that we decided we would go forward with is to the ballot question. So, we can still make the changes to the charter up until that submission, which is August 23. Why we wanted that work meeting and our own meeting was to make sure we're putting forward the best charter that we possibly can. And after, again, lively debate, we said we should just leave the thresholds for those override vetoes where they are at 5 to 3. So, that's probably a fairly significant move from the charter, on the Charter Commission's point part, but that's what we elected to do. Other than that, I believe the rest of it is unchanged. Yes?
Sean, how will the ballot read?
The exact wording, I don't have off the top of my head. I would- I would look over to Kevin if you have it. Because it's basically a yes/no question of whether or not, do you approve of the changes that were forwarded by the Wilmer Charter Commission? It might not be the exact wording, but it's pretty close.
Further questions, comments?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Sean, for being here. If this goes to ballot and then just say it, speculate that it fails, you were still allowed to go back and have your meetings and come back and approve sections at a time, right? I mean...
Yeah, I think we're able to bring, but that now, I understand every one of those submissions comes forward as an ordinance that we have to then publish. And that's why we looked at, you know, if we had some sort of common ground, even with what I presented here this evening, to republish it, to bring it to the council for another vote, is very expensive to the taxpayers. And we wanted to avoid that particular situation. And going to a ballot question saves the taxpayers a lot of money. And if we're all on a very similar page, we thought that was a good idea. If it didn't pass and we still had that kind of common ground, we would probably bring it back. To you, how we would bring that back, we do have the ability to do it in sections or in the entire entirety. But either way, it's gonna still cost the same amount of money to bring it forward.
Reason I ask is that when we do an ordinance and it fails and you bring it up, it has to be reworded completely different, if I'm not mistaken. Maybe our attorney can answer that. The Charter Commission is able to leave everything intact, from what I understand. Say it fails, but we have like ten sections we agree on, and they can bring them back intact, the same as what they proposed on the ballot, correct?
Councilmember Christensen, I believe that is correct. I don't believe there are any statutory limitations on the Charter Commission's ability to propose amendments to the council. So to get to your point, I don't think there'd be anything to prevent the commission from simply taking one portion of the slate of proposed changes that they're putting forward and reintroducing that verbatim just on its own.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions, Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thanks, Sean, and thanks to your committee again for all the work they do. I need some clarification on what you said on section two oh eight. The administrator and the attorney, you're gonna leave it, but you would be open to...
Well, some of the discussion that you shared with us was that this would handcuff the council to change that job description if you ever see that's necessary. We're saying that the Charter Commission should stay in existence. And if you find that there's a particular piece that are in those particular descriptions that you think should be pulled, we would be more than happy to call meetings to just deal with those, just sort of like we dealt with the committee levels for the hospital board and so on.
What was the reason that you wanted to leave it in the charter?
The discussion circled around the division of labor, understanding what different entities are responsible within the city structure. Because when you put them in, we had a lot of discussion about what the mayor does, the city administrator does, the city attorney does. And those are not defined in the charter. And so they thought that those positions should be memorialized in the charter. We had lots of discussion of whether or not we would have the ordinance verbatim, which is more or less what we did. We did add, of course, that the city administrator would be responsible for the city charter. But we thought, if we put this in, it would clarify that the jobs of what, who does what, and so on. Because it wasn't in here when we originally started because we didn't have a city administrator.
Couldn't you just say something as simple as duties as outlined in the ordinance? I mean, it seems like we're making it very difficult to make changes to job descriptions. And that needs to be fluid, in my mind.
Right. We had talked about when we get to the phase two of the charter, and we try to scale back, that would there be language you could have incorporated in here, what gets to the crux of what these people do, but maybe doesn't do it as prescribed as the ordinance does? But we didn't have very many, a lot of creative language to put in there. But that's something that I think we were looking at. If this were to pass, the next phase would be to find a language that would pare this down, get to the crux of what they do, so it isn't memorialized in the charter, but maybe doesn't have it prescribed as it is in the ordinance. So we did have that discussion.
So you had that discussion. Do you think that is what will happen going two years down the road? Is that likely to be the case? Because this is a, I struggle with this one, but if I could hear you say, "We really wanna go that direction anymore." I mean, you can't speak for the whole commission. I understand that.
Right. Well, I can tell you, as long as I'm the Chair, Councilman Anderson, we would take those in right immediately. We talked about even if you want, because there were some of the items that are actually on here that were talked about earlier and will be talked about later in your agenda, that if you wanted to even make a move on those even this evening, we would meet before our August twenty-third deadline and change it if we needed to do that. We didn't want, we wanted to work with the council and not prescribe it.
Thank you.
Councilman DeBlick?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sean, you have the August twenty-third deadline you're seeing. Correct. Have it published for ballot question. If you do actually go to the ballot with it, and I don't know if you're totally committed to go one way or the other with that yet, but how are you going to have it published or educate the voters on what the changes are to the charter and what they're actually voting on?
I believe we've talked about having it actually on the city website. And I believe that we'll probably end up having many of our commission members going around to various clubs, organizations, and their places, presenting what those changes actually are. We hope that covers our bases. We would hope the ones that, when it is posted on the website, it should have the strike-through kind of edits, so people can see what is new, what's changing, and so on, instead of actually printing it in black and white where you can't really tell what actually is the changes to the charter.
Any further comments? I don't think we need...
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Back to the question Dennis raised, here's a question for our attorney. What trumps what? If the job descriptions are in the charter, and we have an ordinance that says the same thing, and then say that we amend the ordinance, job description of the city administrator, take for example, which one takes preference?
The charter would take preference. It helps to think of the charter as the city's constitution, so nothing that you can do by ordinance can alter that. The only reason, the only way something accomplished in the charter wouldn't take precedence as if it's contrary to state law or it deals with an area that's preempted by the state legislature or otherwise against public policy. But once it's in the charter, the charter trumps ordinance.
And who's to, who's to be the referee or the judge on this? And the charter presently says that we're to have a park and rec board. Guess what? We don't. So we're breaking the law? Are we guilty of a misdemeanor? I mean, what, how do you rectify that? I mean, if you had a strong-willed council and they changed the ordinance and they said, "We're gonna stick to it," I mean, who's gonna come down with the badge and the citation? I mean, what's gonna happen? Anything?
You know, to answer your specific question on the park board, I haven't honestly looked at that to know if the city is out of compliance with the charter or if by, I know there's a joint powers board with the school district, if that would satisfy the requirement that it have a body dealing with parks issues. So I don't have an opinion on that. But going forward, anytime an ordinance is proposed to you, it would be the job of staff and myself, I suppose, to confirm that it's consistent with the city's charter.
Then I share the same concerns as Councilman Anderson as far as keeping them in there. I don't, I don't know if I'm on board with that or not. It just, it really does handcuff us. Thank you.
This was for just information only? There's no...
Well, I don't know.
Well, we had talked about if we could have, even though it wouldn't be an official vote, but if we had met more of the concerns than you have, than didn't, some indicators of that as we move forward, it would be nice to have sort of a blessing of the council, if you will, maybe with some contingencies, but something to that effect as we move forward and start presenting it to the community as we get closer to election time. That, in no way, shape, or form, is something that we must do.
Yeah, I agree with the ordinances taking precedent over the description of the city charter rather than to be listed. And I know it's been talked about, everybody has an opinion. And they're not bad opinions. Nobody's wrong in this case. It's just an issue of how do you manage? And I think if the people in the Charter Commission or any other resident was out there and they had to make decisions on the council level, who are we responsible to for all the people? They look at it and say, "Well, of course, if we have to revise things or change things due to staff changes or changing of departments, we should have that leeway to administer." And I think it also, have it locked in is also a hindrance to the city administrator on long-term planning because we'd have to go back, we can't even move ahead with changes or altering positions in the future. Let's say if the department has their different positions without confirming it with the city charter, which makes it very cumbersome if you're in administration, administrative role. You know what I mean?
Oh, I totally understand what you're saying. And I'll say again, I think what we were planning to do would be revisit this and pare it down. I understand that there's some hesitancy of, "Will that happen?" It will happen. What it will look like, I do not know. And like I said, we've talked about changing the words already, but we're under an August twenty-third deadline, and we don't have a lot of creative pens that are put in words to paper. I totally understand, and I actually share the same concerns that you are expressing.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Anderson?
Thank you. I think we need to take Sean and his committee at their word. They're saying that they will look at it and make some changes so that it becomes something more palatable in that area. I'll take you at your word.
Thank you.
Did you wanna come up, John? John wants to speak. Don't run away, Sean.
I think John meant, maybe he did, maybe I didn't hear it right. I'm deaf in one ear and dumb in the other. You could, if you did it quick enough, like even start it tonight, make an ordinance to change whatever you wanna change. Because you can make an ordinance and send it to the Charter Commission, and then we can act on it. If we approve it, we approve it. I think you can enact an ordinance now to change whatever you wanna change on that section, if that's what we're talking about. If you get too carried away, we probably won't do anything. But I think we are willing to go along with that. And then we could change it with our vote on a majority. And then we could change the ordinance, we could change the charter before the vote.
Is that right, Kevin?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, but I think theoretically, they're discussing if there's changes to the administrator job description. They haven't analyzed it, and there are no changes that I know of being discussed. So it's just premature. If and when it happens, that's planning down the road.
But if you sent us an ordinance today to take it out and just leave it the way it was, you know, we'd look at it. We might not approve it, but we'd look at it as a commission. Because you can present any ordinance to us that you wanna change, or you can make an ordinance to do something to the charter, no matter where it is in the charter, and we can act on it. Not that we'll always approve it, it's just like you don't always approve what we bring you. But I just wanted to mention that.
Councilman Anderson, do you have a question?
Well, I did, and it was gonna be directed to Robert. I think we're all trying to get, just trying to get this resolved. But I'd like to get Robert's version on if we could do an ordinance and quick, get it there.
Thank you, Councilmember Anderson. The formal point to make is that any, if you're gonna amend the charter by ordinance, the ordinance must be formally proposed to the council by the Charter Commission. There's nothing wrong at all with having this dialogue, and it's a productive thing to do. But the communication would have to come to the commission less formally than a formal ordinance being sent to them. Under the statute that talks about how charters can be amended, if it's the council proposing an ordinance, it's subject to a vote anyway. So you'd have to have a vote on that proposal. If you communicate your concerns and the commission is amenable to them and wants to propose an ordinance that takes those into account, to the council, you could certainly approve that ordinance as you would any charter commission-initiated ordinance amendment, charter amendment by ordinance. And it would take effect that way, but...
And let me add, if you had any really creative language to put in either of those, that would make really good sense, we would be more than happy to take a look at those.
Now, I'm totally confused.
Mr. Mayor, I'm sorry.
Audrey, did you have a question? Member of the Charter Commission, by the way.
Audrey Nelson, I'm a member of the Charter Commission. I don't see this as hand-tying you at all. I see this as the Charter Commission trying to get the charter up to date with how the city operates right now. I don't see us looking to change job descriptions or anything major with any of those positions. It is simply bringing it up to date with how it works. And if that job description for the administrator changes at some point in time, and it's before there's ordinances taken out or whatever might be the second version of the charter, then that's something that comes with it. Part of what's being put in there is for the city administrator to make sure that the things that are happening do coincide with the charter. And I don't see us trying to change any position, it's simply trying to get the charter to the point where we're operating right now with the administrator's job description. There's nothing in the charter right now. And to change the language and put something different in the charter than what's actually enforced right now probably has the same thing of the administrator saying, "Well, I don't have to do that because it's not in the charter." If we're changing the contract or changing the ordinance or changing, that's not our goal. Our goal is just to try to get it up to date with how it's operating right now. And if down the road, the second version is going to be a briefer, then it has to be worked with to figure out what's gonna be in ordinance and what's not gonna be in the charter. And I think that's all the intention is right now, is to get this done and get the charter up to date with how the city operates right now.
Sean, would this all be in the ballot?
No, the ballot question would simply be, yes, certainly all of the changes that were made to the charter.
Mr. Mayor, I wanna clarify one point. I haven't specifically been asked to revise the ballot language, and I haven't looked at it really closely. I'm aware of the question that was read earlier today. There is a role for the city to ensure that the ballot question is clear to the voter so the voters know what precisely they're voting on, whether that's in presenting a summary before the actual ballot question or splitting the question into several questions if it's too complex to summarize in, you know, one paragraph and one question. That's a function that I have not performed. I do believe there's a place for the city to perform it before it is presented to the voters.
Is that something that you would work together with the Charter Commission?
Certainly happy to do so.
Rich Rawning wrote the question that is currently the one we're moving forward with. So it was addressed with the city attorney before, but we'd be more than happy with a new city attorney to take a look at it. But the question was created by Rich Rawning.
Charlie, do we need to have our city attorney take a look at it?
I think that's a question for the city attorney, if he would like to review it. It's probably wise to have the city attorney review it. It was written by a different city attorney. It was written months ago.
Mr. Mayor, I think that would be appropriate. I think that, as I understand it, I would have concerns with whether a voter, seeing this ballot question, would actually understand what he's being asked to vote on, or she. And I don't have a specific idea what I'd like to, what I might like to do to change the language, but I do think it'd be appropriate for me to look at it and make some recommendations.
Okay. And would you do that?
Absolutely.
Thank you. Audrey?
Just have a question because I thought there was a deadline on how that wording had to be done when we did that. And we sent it into the city council for approval so that we've met the deadline so that it could be on the ballot. And I thought that that was something that couldn't be changed.
The deadline cannot be changed. It'll be a handful of days after the Board of Canvas from the primary election, and they will begin to publish the ballot. August twenty-third is it? Till that very hour.
So if I may ask the city attorney, that means, was your schedule to get that done?
Certainly, I can look at it right away.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
Yes. Thank you. You know, it's fine to have the discussion on the ballot question. I'm hoping that we don't have to do that. I'm hoping that we don't have to do that. I mean, if I'm hearing, the council, we have, I think the question is narrowed down to this, the one issue. I think. And again, I would say, I heard you say you're going to work on revising that, so I hope we don't have to bring this to a ballot question. I don't think it's necessary. I hope we can get consensus, well, not consensus. Eight votes. It's got to be unanimous that this will work out. You folks have come a long way. I mean, you've agreed to, you know, most everything we've wanted and we have an assurance on the other thing, so I'm good.
Thank you. The ballot question, though, will probably cost the taxpayers $200 or less by the inch of the ballot.
But...
And the ordinance is $5,200, so you have to balance that out also.
We've already published the ordinance.
You would have to publish it again. It has changed from the one that was published.
Okay. Mr. Mayor?
Sean and Audrey both have questions.
I just want Sean to clarify, you say that about changing that language prior to it? That's the intention, I think, our, I thought was that it changed at any point.
That's correct.
That's what I heard.
Yep.
Okay, so now, can they? I thought that it was a done deal that you were going to put this on the ballot.
That's where we are, yes. Because we were looking at that $5,200 versus $200 and thought we would save the taxpayers a little bit of money by doing that route, which gives us that August 23rd deadline that people keep talking about.
So is there a vote that we need to take tonight?
Mr. Mayor, the commission members will be going to various community clubs and we anticipate many of their questions would be, is the city council backing these amendments or opposing them? It would be nice tonight if we had a position. It need not be unanimous because most of the council decisions aren't at times, but the bottom line is if they ask that question, commission members need to be prepared with an answer. And so a motion along that line would be appropriate to give them guidance as they go out among the community.
Can you give me an example of what the motion might be? That we support the charter as revised by the commission?
Correct.
So moved.
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to offer support to the Charter Commission, the council's support to the Charter Commission in the charter the way it is written. Just a motion on that?
Simple motion. Standing motion.
Mr. Mayor, I apologize for interrupting. Is the, just to be clear, because I might not have heard it correctly, is the motion or the intent of this motion that the city council supports the specific slate of changes the Charter Commission has proposed to the council?
Yes. That would be my thought. Is that what you...
Support the revisions.
Yes.
So the council would be voting to indicate their support to the slate of specific amendments the Charter Commission has put forward?
That was the intent. And that was just a simple motion?
Yes.
Discussion? Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It seems to me it would be a whole lot easier to take out the items that we disagree on, or item, I guess it is right now, as Councilman Anderson suggested, vote on the balance of it that we agree on than send that one question to the public. I mean, if our city attorney told us that the voters have to understand what they're voting on, how are you going to do that? It may cost $200 to put on a ballot and $50,000 to explain it. How are you going to do that with all the changes? There's red on every page. I mean, there's pages and pages of changes in here. How in the world are we going to do that? I don't know why we have been discussing or arguing about one or two items in here all along and the Charter Commission, very simple, to ask us to vote on the ones that we agree on, wouldn't have to go to the ballot, just the contentious items that have to be. The job description one presently, I think, is the only one that we're disagreeing on. I mean, why? I'm going to vote, no, I'll tell you that, so, I don't know, because of that one item. So that kills it. So then you send the whole thing to the public and you have to explain to them, and if my neighbors, I have a lot of elderly people in my neighborhood, if they don't understand what they're voting on and they don't vote on it, is that a yes or a no vote?
It is not a no vote, like the Constitution.
It isn't.
No.
Okay, so it's a no...
It's a different criteria.
It is not a vote, in other words. It's...
Does, what Mr. Councilman Christensen is saying, does it make sense to do it that way?
That's a little complicated question. I guess before I answer it, though, I would like to make one point for clarification in case it wasn't clear. As I understand it, the Charter Commission is not here today with a formal submission of a new proposed Charter Amendment Ordinance that would allow you to take a vote on it and if it's unanimous in support, allow that amendment to become effective. The commission is, I believe, and someone can sure correct me if I'm wrong, I believe the commission would still have to take the formal step to propose the ordinance that they want to put on the ballot. And I believe what you heard tonight was an overview of what they envisioned that ordinance would entail, or at least a summary of where they are with that ordinance based on previous communications with the council.
But councillor, I have to tell you that I agree with Councilman Christensen that it could be made simpler so that the general public understands it.
Sure. So to finish my thought, what, just to be clear, what was just, the motion would entail would just be essentially to gauge the council's support for the Charter Amendment Ordinance that the commission intends to submit to the voters. This is not a formal vote that would have any effect to enact the ordinance or not. It would simply be to have the council on record as supporting or not supporting the slate of amendments the commission has. And you could certainly, if that weren't a neat thing to do, you could certainly take votes on individual proposals that have been summarized today if that would be a tidier thing to do. To answer your question, Mayor, which I believe is, would it be easier for the Charter Commission to essentially glean what the council's position is and what the problems are with any specific amendments they've decided that they want to include in the Charter Amendment Ordinance and come to you with an ordinance taking into, or presenting only those amendments that the council thinks it will support before going to the voters? And conceptually, that may be easier to do it that way if there were some clear indication that the council was going to support certain of these but not others. There would be, as I understand it, just listening to the discussion today, an issue of expense in doing that because the second they propose another ordinance to the council that would incur new publication costs for that ordinance.
Any way, shape, or form, we should make sure that the public understands what they're voting for.
Certainly, Mayor, that would be something that I believe the city has a responsibility to do and that I would be doing in the coming days. Once, I think that would take place as soon as I know what exactly the...
Right.
Exact Charter Commission proposed Charter Amendment Ordinance would say. So they're going to be saying, I want, the commission wants an ordinance to go to the voters, here's our ordinance. And as soon as I have that specific document, I would want to look at, make sure the ballot question or questions, I don't want to limit it to one question, sufficiently can inform the voters of what that...
Thank you.
Amendment would do.
We would be more than happy, I mean, we would be able to resubmit that whole charter minus the, you know, city attorney and the city administrator and resubmit it, but that would sort of go opposite of how we were trying to be good stewards of the taxpayer dollars because now you're going to actually have to pay for the resubmission of the ordinance and you're going to have to pay for the ballot question to deal with the one question that still would be unanswered.
Sean, I would just really appreciate if you and our councillor would get together, you know, and iron out the details just to make it the most palatable for the citizenry.
I would agree, but like I said, if the council wishes to have it back, we could send it back. It just would be more expensive.
Sean, did you have another question?
I think what we're doing here is, all we want to do is bring back to you what we agreed on at our last meeting, add to the temple majority and the rural thing. The other discussions, those were the only two major items that we saw at that time. Now since then, there's been some other things brought up that need to be changed. And they will be changed probably down the road. But all we brought to do tonight is to bring this to you and ask for your support. Now, we could rewrite this whole charter and you wouldn't even know what it said and we could submit it for a ballot, but we don't want to do that. We want you to know what we're trying to do and what we're saying. And we are changing it to your liking, we feel, and any other changes down the road, we will listen to. We listened to you this time. I don't think we're advantaged because the Charter of the law says that we can submit any charter we want to the vote because you turned it down. You didn't want what we wanted. We can rewrite the whole thing right now and give them a whole new ballot. And, but that's not what we're going to do, but it law allows it. And you can bring any amendment to us to change the charter and we can agree with it. I don't think we have to give them to you, you can also do it to us. So it's a two-way street and we're just trying for approval.
Thank you. Can we put in there per the approval of the city attorney? Well, this is just for... No, I mean, for the, for the actual ballot question? I know that this, we're voting here just for support.
Yeah.
To give the charter support, I know that, but I mean, as far as the ballot question, can we put that to the approval of the city attorney?
And Mr. Mayor, I don't believe that the current motion that's on the table has anything to do with the ballot question. That's something that will take place later, although I understand that I'll be working in the coming days with the commission chair to work through that language.
Tell me again what the motion is on the table.
That the city council goes on record in support of the slate of amendments as proposed by the Charter Commission.
And we have a motion and a second on that?
Yes, sir.
Okay, discussed. More discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, just, I want to give you a scenario and see if this works. We have before us, we've all been given this draft. It's dated June 21. And there are minutes for the meeting for the draft, who was for it, who was against it. What if we, as the council, said, what if a motion was made that said, we approve all the changes except this item and this item? And it's eight to zero. Does that count as approving those changes?
No, the only approval of any changes happens to be when the commission gives you an ordinance to approve, publishes it, and you approve it eight to zero. Tonight, it's just a group position that they can use support or against it. They have made their decision, so their draft is the final draft that goes to the people. They voted, and nothing was unanimous, as you can read in the minutes, but they've made their final decision. Here's their final slate of amendments that they've discussed. That's what they want the people to vote on. Now, as they embark on sharing that with the community, they'd like to know the council's position.
Okay, now, hasn't we had one published already?
Not exactly like this, but yes.
The original?
Yes, and it was not approved.
So this one has to be republished?
No.
If you were going to vote on it, if we were bringing it to you for your approval as we did before, then we have to republish it as an ordinance and we could take out the two pieces that we're talking about, but then you would have a chance to vote on it then, but we do have to pay that expense of having that ordinance published.
Okay, so the process and wouldn't include the scenario I presented evidently. So if this goes to ballot, what you're saying is you can change anything you want in here till the day of the, your 23rd deadline of August, correct? You could change anything you wanted in here?
At this point, I don't... Yes, but that would be absolutely something that would not happen.
Okay.
Right.
I think it might be helpful to allow the city attorney to, again, clarify the process.
Thank you. As I understand it, and some of this predated me representing the city, but I've been, I think, brought up to speed. My understanding is the Charter Commission initially took action and took a formal vote to propose an amendment ordinance to the city council. At that point, when it formally proposed the ordinance to the council, if the council unanimously voted in favor of that ordinance, it would have become effective, just like that. And there'd be no need for an election. The statute that governs how charters may be amended has several different procedures that can be followed to effectuate an amendment. That's one of them, to do it by ordinance with unanimous approval by the mayor and city council. Another one is for the Charter Commission to simply propose an amendment ordinance for inclusion on the ballot and then upon a successful election, that Charter Amendment Ordinance would take effect. My understanding procedurally right now is that the commission has presented an ordinance to the council previously that it did not unanimously support, which meant that that ordinance cannot take effect without a vote. Nothing can happen to amend the charter now until the Charter Commission does the next step, which I understand it would be to take another vote to propose a Charter Amendment Ordinance for inclusion on the ballot. I believe they still have to take that formal step.
Yes.
Once they take that step and they have a new proposed Charter Amendment Ordinance, this time for inclusion on the ballot, there's a role for the city to make sure the ballot question is clear, which I will perform, so that the voters know what they're voting on. And if, I should say, any ballot questions that are successful at the election would then become effective. So the motion on the table right now is a motion essentially to make the council's position on the substance of the commission's proposed Charter Amendment Ordinance for election known. So you're just saying regarding this ordinance that the commission's going to take to the voters?
We support it.
The council's, the motion is the council supports it? And presumably if the council does not vote in favor of the motion, the council would be stating its position against it.
You know, scares me, but I understood that.
And I would like to add, the Charter Commission is making some of its decisions based on the prior city attorney's review that the one ballot question will suffice and then take the final draft of the amendments to the community in various ways. If this city attorney finds that every article that's changed in red ink needs to be on the ballot, they got to rethink the whole process. So his decision obviously could change the outcome.
And I believe we have to put our confidence in our city attorney. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, we did, they asked to change a couple of other items in the charter which we passed, one for the utilities in the hospital. What was the publication cost for that? It must have been not as much as the whole. It had to be a lot less.
That was minor.
To me, it would, it would be beneficial and frugal to take these changes that we agree on and bring them to us, publish it, and get it passed.
Well, the sum of the parts will still equal the total of $5,200 if they did it in nine subsections or one.
I think it's less than what they published prior to. I mean, it's considerably less than that. You guys did take some...
Well, I think, if you just took the parts that were corrected out, but that's not my understanding of how the charter gets approved or not. I think all the words have to go into the publication, not just the changes. Because if it was just the changes, you're right, it would be considerably less expensive, but...
Did we publish the entire charter?
Each article. Not the whole charter, no, but each article that was amended, that article was in showing that amendment.
The ones in red and yellow. The ones in red and yellow, basically. So I believe you, there's, there's junk that's not in here that was in the one you published, if I'm not mistaken.
No.
I don't think... This is a lot thinner than the one I had, the ones I had for the last two years.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question.
only. Staff presented a draft fund balance policy for us to hear about. As part of It has been called for the question, and so we'll take a vote. Is this a motion the presentation, staff reviewed and explained various sections of the policy. The various or a roll call?
Roll. Standish motion, your call on that. You can ask a roll call anytime.
sections reviewed dealt with the classification of fund balances, procedures, stabilization Let's go for a, a motion. All those in favor say aye. arrangements, monitoring and reporting, governmental fund definitions, enterprise fund equity,
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
That motion carries. other policy considerations, and reporting requirements. The three main areas explained Thank you, Sean.
Thank you. I didn't think I was going to take that one. Thank you for your time.
to us were the classified section, which explained the five different types: non-spendable, Let's take a 10-minute break. We'll reconvene at 9:00. restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned. The government fund definition section outlining the general, special revenue, debt service, and capital fund definitions, and the, the reporting requirement section. After a lot of discussion and questions, the committee asked staff to compile a report that would show how the city's past practice would be affected by the new terminology. So we took that for information only. Our final item were some reports. We looked at the May Rice Trust and the Rice Financial Reports. That was for information only. Unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee report for July 9, 2012. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We'll go into the Public Works Safety Committee report for July 10, 2012, plans and specifications, airports improvements. Holly, were you going to talk about that, or Kevin?
I think I'm going to give the report.
Okay, why don't you give the report, Holly?
Now, the first item on the agenda was, like you said, Mr. Mayor, on the Public Works Safety Committee, the plans and specifications for improvements at the municipal airport. Jared Vogel, Bolton and Mink was at our meeting. This involves the crack and joint repair of the runway and the taxiway and near the building area. And the specifications for crack sealing on an airport are different than just a typical street. Work order number one was executed in May 25 with Bolton and Mink for the preparation of the plans and specs for that particular work. And these improvements will be funded 70% by state and 30% by local funds, with $50,000 budgeted in the 2012 capital improvement. So I would introduce a resolution, Mr. Mayor, to approve the plans and specifications for these airport improvements and authorize advertisement for bids to be opened August 9.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the plans and specifications for the airport improvements and authorize advertisement for bids to be open August 9, 2012. Discussion? Councilman Omen?
Question. When we did the airport out there, we hired an engineer to design that. The FEA, we had to meet the FAA requirements on airport specifications as to the amount of traffic, the size, the lot, the load, and everything else. I just find it really cumbersome that the FAA is, I'm going to go ahead and vote for this, because I want to get the project done. But I really find it cumbersome that the federal government, with the staff and, and all the individuals that we have in the engineering field out there, cannot write specifications based on the regions due to frost depth and temperature changes, median temperature changes, highs and lows, and come up with specifications that are given to the appropriate airport rather than having money spent, tax dollars, money spent, to have another private firm come out and come out with specifications. I looked on the Internet, very great tool. There are specifications out there that other cities have had out on the public bid process, and I just think that somehow we need to get in touch with our congressman, because this is spending nationwide. You talk about debt, the way, change the way we're doing things, Mr. Dacken. This doesn't make any sense at all. This should be pretty plain, cut, and dried. If the soil, soil corrections have been made on the, on the, on the airport at the time of construction, unless the conditions of the soils have changed, the base is still there. It just needs to be seal coated, and the appropriate composition of, of the suminous crack filler has to be, or concrete filler has to be met, and, and they're all, they're all out there. I, I just find it very frustrating. I don't know. I'm, I'm going to be writing a letter to somebody in the FAA and to my congressman tonight, and I encourage every citizen here to do the same thing, because this is a lot of money we're looking at nationwide that we're spending that I really don't think we need to. They should be able to write their own specifications. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, councilman. Councilmember Christensen, do you have a question?
No, I was pointing to Mr. DeBlee. He had a, his hand out.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess that the committee, has the city engineer, have you had a chance to review and look at the specifications?
Counsel, I do have the plans, specs, and I have reviewed them.
And you're...
I've reviewed them for content, not for the technicalities of it. And it includes all the content that I discussed with Bolton and Mink, is what we agreed with, what we wanted to go out for bids.
Okay, are they also reviewed by anybody in the Department of Aeronautics?
I believe they are also reviewed by Aeronautics. I'm not 100% sure, but they also are reviewed internally by other, other members of the consultant that put the plans together. There is a, there is a check and balances process that they use when they put these together. It's not just one person putting them together and sending them out.
I'll answer your questions. And Councilman Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, too, Councilmember Omen's question, is that your position that whoever built the runways and installed them, that they didn't build them to the proper specification? Because I'm not sure how many takeoffs and landings we've had over, how long has the airport been in operation?
Initially opened in the fall of 2006. This is typically a maintenance-type project. All of the cracks that have been identified have been measured and identified by the consultant. I don't, I don't believe, and I, I'm not going to speak for Ms. Councilman Omen, but I don't believe he's implying that it was constructed incorrectly in the beginning.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
No, it's, that's not my case at all. That was, it's a maintenance issue.
Further discussion? Roll call?
Councilmember Christiansen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Omen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlee.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries. Next item was in regards to Project 1109, and Josh Helverson from Don and Hewitt Associates was present at our meeting, and this is for the final acceptance of the decommissioning of the Hortonblad and Arby's Lift Stations project, and then the sewer extension of 21st Street Southwest. And this work has been completed by the contractor, Reiner Contracting Incorporated, and including the outfall, removal of the old outfall. And that was added by change order. So I would introduce a resolution, Mr. Mayor, to accept Project 1109, issue final payment to Reiner Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $27,174.36.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept the project number 1109 and issue final payments to Reiner Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $27,174.36. Discussion? Roll call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Omen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlee.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christiansen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries. Next item was a request from our Public Works Director, Holly Wilson, to use $1,718.75 of unused funds from the purchase of pickup to fund additional costs of a John Deere mower. The capital outlay program includes $25,000 for the replacement of that mower. First item on our agenda was a draft fund balance policy discussion. That was for information That was for information only. Staff presented a draft fund balance policy for us to hear about. As part of the presentation, staff reviewed and explained various sections of the policy. The various sections reviewed dealt with the classification of fund balances, procedures, stabilization arrangements, monitoring and reporting, governmental fund definitions, enterprise fund equity, other policy considerations, and reporting requirements. The three main areas explained to us were the classified section, which explained the five different types: non-spendable, restricted, committed, assigned, and unassigned; the government fund definition section outlining the general, special revenue, debt service, and capital fund definitions, and the reporting requirement section. After a lot of discussion and questions, the committee asked staff to compile a report that would show how the city's past practice would be affected by the new terminology. So we took that for information only. Our final item were some reports. We looked at the May Rice Trust and the Rice Financial Reports. That was for information only. Unless there's questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Finance Committee Report for July 9th, 2012. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We'll go into the Public Works Safety Committee Report for July 10th, 2012, plans and specifications, airports improvements. Holly, were you going to talk about that, or Kevin?
I think I'm going to give the report.
Okay, why don't you give the report, Holly?
Now, the first item on the agenda was, like you said, Mr. Mayor, on the Public Works Safety Committee, the plans and specifications for improvements at the municipal airport. Jared Vogel, Bolton and Mink was at our meeting. This involves the crack and joint repair of the runway and the taxiway and near the building area. And the specifications for crack sealing on an airport are different than just a typical street. Work order number one was executed in May 25th with Bolton and Mink for the preparation of the plans and specs for that particular work. And these improvements will be funded 70% by state and 30% by local funds with $50,000 budgeted in the 2012 capital improvements. So I would introduce a resolution, Mr. Mayor, to approve the plans and specifications for these airport improvements and authorize advertisement for bids to be opened August 9th.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the plans and specifications for the airport improvements and authorize advertisement for bids to be opened August 9th, 2012. Discussion?
Councilman Amen.
Question. When we did the airport out there, we hired an engineer to design that. The FEA, we had to meet the FAA requirements on airport specifications as to the amount of traffic, the size, the lot, the load, and everything else. I just find it really cumbersome that the FAA is, I'm going to go ahead and vote for this because I want to get the project done, but I really find it cumbersome that the federal government, with the staff and all the individuals that we have in the engineering field out there, cannot write specifications based on the regions due to frost depth and temperature changes, median temperature changes, highs and lows, and come up with specifications that are given to the appropriate airport rather than having money spent, tax dollars money spent, to have another private firm come out and come out with specifications. I looked on the Internet, very great tool. There are specifications out there that other cities have had out on the public bid process, and I just think that somehow we need to get in touch with our congressman because this is spending nationwide. You talk about debt, the way, change the way we're doing things, Mr. Dacken. This doesn't make any sense at all. This should be pretty plain, cut, and dried. If the soil corrections have been made on the airport at the time of construction, unless the conditions of the soils have changed, the base is still there, it just needs to be seal coated, and the appropriate composition of the suminous crack filler has to be, or concrete filler, has to be met, and they're all out there. I just find it very frustrating, and I don't know, I'm going to be writing a letter to somebody in the FAA and to my congressman tonight, and I encourage every citizen here to do the same thing because this is a lot of money we're looking at nationwide that we're spending that I really don't think we need to. They should be able to write their own specifications. That's it. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman. Councilman Christensen, did you have a question?
No, I was pointing to Mr. DeBlee, he had his hand out.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess that the committee, as the city engineer, if you had a chance to review and look at the specifications and...
Council, I do have the plans, specs, and I have reviewed them.
And you're...
I've reviewed them for content, not for the technicalities of it, and it includes all the content that I discussed with Bolton and Mink, is what we agreed with, what we wanted to go out for bids.
Okay, are they also reviewed by anybody in the Department of Aeronautics?
I believe they are also reviewed by Aeronautics. I'm not 100% sure, but they also are reviewed internally by other members of the consultant that put the plans together. There is a check and balances process that they use when they put these together. It's not just one person putting them together and sending them out.
Do you have any questions? Yeah, Councilman Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess too, Councilmember Amen's question, is it your position that whoever built the runways and installed them, that they didn't build them to the proper specification? Because I'm not sure how many takeoffs and landings we've had over, how long has the airport been in operation?
Initially opened in the fall of 2006. This is typically a maintenance-type project. All of the cracks that have been identified have been measured and identified by the consultant. I don't, I don't believe, and I'm not going to speak for Ms. Councilman Amen, but I don't believe he's implying that it was constructed incorrectly in the beginning.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
No, it's, that's not my case at all. That was, it's a maintenance issue.
Further discussion? Rule call.
Councilmember Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlee.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
Next item was in regards to Project 1109, and Josh Helverson from Don and Hewitt Associates was present at our meeting, and this is for the final acceptance of the decommissioning of the Hortonblad and Arby's Lift Stations project, and then the sewer extension of 21st Street Southwest. And this work has been completed by the contractor, Reiner Contracting Incorporated, and including the outfall, removal of the old outfall. And that was added by change order. So I would introduce a resolution, Mr. Mayor, to accept Project 1109, issue final payment to Reiner Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $27,174.36.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept the project number 1109 and issue final payments to Reiner Contracting Incorporated in the amount of $27,174.36. Discussion?
Rule call.
Councilmember Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlee.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Next item was a request from our Public Works Director, Holly Wilson, to use $1,718.75 of unused funds from the purchase of pickup to fund additional costs of a John Deere mower. The capital outlay program includes $25,000 for the replacement of that mower, and the staff is requesting that we take the low bid from HOG for $25,000 plus the $1,718.75 in applicable taxes for a total of $26,718.75. So I would introduce a resolution to reallocate that $1,718.75 toward the purchase of the John Deere mower.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to reallocate $1,718.75 toward the purchase of the John Deere mower. Discussion?
Rule call.
Councilmember Amen.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlee.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
And that motion carries.
Public Works Director Holly Wilson also presented a change order number one to Project 1111/1112, and that's the reconstruction of 19th Street Northwest from Gorton Avenue to the north end of the cul-de-sac and a segment of 12th Street Southwest from Trot to Becker. And the change order is in the amount of $5,379.04, and that was due to overruns in bituminous and sidewalk items. They're also requesting acceptance of the project with issuance of final payment to Chad Munson Excavating. All the work is completed, and the final quantities have been agreed upon, so I would introduce a resolution to accept change order number one, authorize final payment to the contractor in the amount of $32,269.08.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to accept the change order number one and authorize final payment to the contractor in the amount of $32,269.08. Discussion?
Rule call.
Councilmember Johnson.
Aye.
Dacken.
Aye.
Fagerly.
Aye.
DeBlee.
Aye.
Reese.
Aye.
Christensen.
Aye.
Anderson.
Aye.
Amen.
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
That motion carries.
There were some miscellaneous discussions. One of them was our Public Works Director, Holly Wilson, informing the committee that she received a request from Councilmember Christensen to discuss the condition of stormwater intakes within the city. This will be addressed at one of our future Public Works meetings when Holly has more time to address the question and research it. Councilmember Christensen also brought up the closing of a portion of Candyway Southwest for Wilmer Fest. He requested further discussion to take place regarding street sweeping and suggested moving forward with recommendations from the Stormwater Task Force. It was noted that these items would be discussed as part of the budgeting process. That's the only items we had. If there's any questions, I'll entertain them. Otherwise, I move to file the minutes.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Public Works Safety Committee Report for July 10th, 2012. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We'll go into the Labor Relations Committee Report for July 11th, 2012. Councilman Amen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. Item number one on the agenda was Mr. Hirscher was present. He expresses opinions, and he had a letter that was presented, and I believe we all received it, a copy of it, in concerns regarding the City of Wilmer's contract negotiations, labor agreements. Mr. Hirscher encouraged greater city council participation in the process, and then Mr. Hirscher had to leave the meeting. Mr. Sullivan also provided his, John Sullivan, provided his opinions on the definitions of collective bargaining and how they pertain to the bargaining units for the City of Wilmer. Mr. Sullivan also encouraged greater council participation in process, and they both spoke to that earlier tonight, or this evening. Public comments. Item number two was consideration of vacant positions. Ms. Stevens, our city administrator, presented information on three vacant positions, one appraiser, one wastewater treatment plant operator, one engineering technician position. Ms. Stevens stated that one position was vacant due to retirement, and the other two vacancies are due to resignation. Mr. Anderson, Councilman Anderson, stated that it's concern, concerns that it appeared that the younger employees were leaving the organization only after short tenures, and Councilman Reese also expressed the same concerns. In response to a question from Councilman Anderson, Ms. Stevens stated that the turnover of employees is becoming a concern. It is, I just want to add a comment here. We have 103 employees. I don't think our turnover rate is that bad, but out of, compared to other companies. But anyway, in response to question from Mr. Yanis regarding, Ms. Stevens stating that one employee took a job with Candyway County and the other with Crow Wing County, Mr. Mary Yanis stated that he would not support filling all three positions, and Ms. Stevens stated that the three positions were not interchangeable and duties could not be combined among three positions as each position is a separate skill set. Councilmembers asked if it would be possible to consider consolidation from the county's Appraisals Department. Ms. Stevens stated that she had spoken to Mr. Kleindell, the county administrator, and was not feasible at this time. I believe that we directed her to continue a discussion with that. And I just want to also add that the comment made was that if we are going to go ahead with this, now would be the time to speak against anybody in the council because if we stand undivided, it's not going to look good again, and we are going to be wasting a lot of people's time. In response to a question by the mayor asking for the county's reasons, Ms. Stevens stated that Mr. Kleindell, that the county had more pressing priorities at the time. Ms. Stevens also stated that even if the departments were consolidated, the position of the appraiser would be necessary, and any positions of consolidation would take approximately a year to 18 months, and the city would still need to conduct appraisals during that time, appraisals during that time. In response, there was a question regarding outsourcing the activities of the engineering technician. Ms. Stevens to the Ms. Wilson stated the option had been considered in 2009 when the position was vacant, and again, with this vacancy, and staff did not believe there was, there would be any cost savings. But I believe we will be dealing with that again, we are repeating some quotes. Councilmember Johnson asked if the three positions were in the 2013 budget, and Ms. Stevens stated that they were included in the budget. Councilman Reese made a motion seconded by Councilmember Anderson to authorize filling the position of the wastewater treatment operator, and that was carried unanimously. Committee members asked Ms. Stevens to once again contact Candyway County to discuss consolidation of the appraisal department and to gather additional information regarding privatizing the services of the engineering technician position. I believe that's a surveyor's position.
We need a motion.
We need a motion. I would introduce the motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
What is the motion?
To fill the vacancy of wastewater treatment.
Motion has been made and seconded to fill the position of the wastewater treatment operator. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Item number three was the consideration of organizational assessments by Springstead Incorporated. We talked about the county, or the county and the municipal utilities also having the same services performed by them. Ms. Stevens stated that she had obtained a proposal from Dave Unmott of Springstead to conduct an organizational assessment for the City of Wilmer, and she also stated that she obtained the proposal based on a request from the Labor Relations Committee at a previous meeting, and based upon the work Springstead has done with the municipal utilities in Candyway County, we asked for their proposal. Ms. Stevens stated that the study would have five deliverables, recommendations of the organizational structure, an assessment of the workplace culture, observations and opportunities for intergovernmental relations, an assessment of the city's customer service, and recommendations on the business practices and process in place. Ms. Stevens stated the fees would be $17,500 plus expenses of $1,250. Ms. Stevens stated the costs of the study were not included in the 2012 budget, but funds could be reallocated to cover the costs. Councilmember Johnson asked if the study would evaluate each individual job, and Ms. Stevens stated the study was not to that detail, but would evaluate the overall operations structure of the city. I asked if there were other proposals that have been sought, but Ms. Stevens stated that it had been the direction of the committee to contact Springstead, and we did that at a previous meeting. Councilmember Anderson also stated that he did not feel other proposals were necessary and that Springstead would bring some synergy to the study based upon knowledge of the community and the other two organizations that were reviewed. Mary Yanis questioned the funding for the study. If the city was not able to fund flowers for downtown, Councilmember Johnson stated he felt that there was value and obtained an outside perspective. Councilmember Anderson made a motion seconded by Councilmember Johnson to accept the proposal from Springstead to perform the organizational study for the City of Wilmer in the amount of $17,500 plus expenses of $1,250, and the motion passed unanimously. I move the recommendation to committee, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
A motion has been made and seconded...
For, to hire Springstead to do organizational review.
To hire Springstead to do the organizational review. Discussion? Councilman Christensen?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Now, we have an organization chart that's pretty clear. I thought about this after the meeting since I couldn't speak at the meeting, and I haven't received one phone call from a constituent saying that they would want us to do this. But I do get phone calls for train noise, stormwater, and street repair. Those are the three things I get phone calls on constantly. If we have $20,000 to spend on this assessment, why don't we put it in one of those three? Street repair, stormwater, or train noise? I think those priorities are higher than this. I don't know what we would get out of the assessment. I know there's an explanation here, but I personally don't think that we need it, and that money could be better spent on citizen concerns. That's my take on it.
Councilman, okay, Councilman Johnson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've given this some additional thought since we discussed it at the committee meeting, and we have a substantial ongoing business relationship with Springstead. And I'm just, you know, if they're going to evaluate and give some opinions on overall operations and structure of the city, I'm just wondering about their objectivity based on their ongoing relationship and all the things that we hire them to do. I've been pleased with all their work, don't have any objections or questions about it, but I just think whether we'd get the objectivity we might be looking for. They have an ongoing business relationship that they have an interest in. I have no reason to believe that they might not be objective, but yet there's the appearance of it, and I just throw that out there, some additional food for thought on this.
Councilman Reese?
I think, you know, some of the discussion we had at the committee in regards to Springstead's doing it, and I think some of the real values lay in the fact that they have done a review of the MUC, they have done a review of the county, they do know the community. There's some overlap on things. I think it's very advantageous for us to move ahead with this, especially now, I can hear, yeah, there's other things we could be funding, but I think the value of this is going to be more than what we can really recognize right now, and it's objectivity coming from the outside, and I just, I look forward to the report. I look forward to the organizational study, and I just hope that it passes here tonight because I just think it's going to be really good for the city.
Councilman Dacken?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Where does the, where do the dollars come from? The $17,500 and the $12,500, where are they coming from? Is this...
I'll put that question to our city administrator.
We would propose reallocating some of the funding from some vacant, some salary savings of positions that are current, that are, that there's a gap between, and there's always salary savings, between the time it takes to fill a position that becomes vacant and the time that another individual goes into that position. So we would, we would propose reallocating some of those salary savings to cover these costs.
I agree with Councilmember Johnson. I wonder about their objectivity after having done both the county and the MUC.
Councilman Anderson?
Thank you, sir. I, I think it's great that they did the county and the MUC. They know everything, and I look at this whole thing, this whole process as an investment. It's an investment. We're going to see our strengths and our weaknesses and some potentials for change as we look to the future. We can't, and I hear this all the time, we can't continue doing business as we are. This maybe give us an opportunity to look at some things to change, and maybe it'll give us some additional money. Maybe it'll, maybe it'll save us some money. So I, I don't have any problem with Springstead. In fact, that's my outfit of choice, and I think it's a great investment, and we should go forward.
Councilman DeBlee?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I'd agree with Councilmember Anderson that this, Springstead is probably the better consultant to go forward with on this, in that they already know the county, they know the MUC. They've also worked with the city on the hiring of the current city administrator, so they know our structure somewhat, and I think they could give us, you know, an honest and objective opinion on, on the structure that the city, the organizational, should have. So I can see it having a lot of value in saving us, saving us lots of money as far as some of the decisions that are upcoming, about filling positions, and to have this, have some type of an organizational structure put together, so.
Any further questions or comments? Councilman Fagerly?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to see a report that they've done on a community previously, not the county or the utilities, because I'm sure you could probably use a lot of the information from there because there's a lot of boilerplate information.
Oh, I'm sure that they have done studies for a number of communities of different sizes and a number of organizations of different sizes. I'm not sure that you can, I'm not sure that you can take the recommendations from one community and apply them to another community or another organization because organizations are separate and distinct, and they operate individually. But we could certainly, if somebody wants, you know, the, the year, copies of the MUC report, copies of the Candyway County report are done. I did not request copies from other cities that they had done, but I certainly can request that if that's some additional information the council would like to have.
Because my concern is, they'll do the report, and we'll just put it on a shelf, and we won't do anything. They might come back and say we got too many councilmen, need to reduce it down to five or something like that.
Councilman Dacken, did you have another question?
Yeah. If I could be assured, because we do need to do some consolidating between the city, the county, and the MUC, we need to be able to save some dollars that way. If I could be convinced that this report would point out those potential changes to save dollars, I might be convinced to support this, but I'm not sure that we're going to get that level of expertise because, again, getting back to what the League of Minnesota Cities, we have to do things differently. We live in a new norm. We got to start sharing within the city, the county, and the MUC. If I could be convinced of that, I'll just leave it at that.
Mr. Mayor? I'm sorry, go ahead, Councilman Reese?
You know, if we're going to be doing things differently, we need somebody that can stand on the outside and say, here's something you could do that's different. This is, this is exactly what's been talked about around this table for a long time of how do we do things differently? And I think we need some help from the outside to identify where we can do things differently. I really think that there's going to be so much value in this, and this is just my opinion, value in this, that it'll pay for itself. opinion, value in this, that it'll pay for itself. Seventeen thousand five hundred dollars. I think there could be some savings within our budget that are going to exceed that.
Councilman Amin?
No, I'll wait until everybody else speaks.
Okay. Did you have something?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, Councilmember Baggert brings up an interesting point as far as, how can we be assured that we, when we get this, that we're going to act on it? And, and I think that's all of our jobs. I, I think we, we do need to. We can't just set it on the shelf, otherwise we've wasted it. And, and I, there may be some things in here that we don't like. I mean, that maybe the county said that there were some things that made them uncomfortable. Well, you know, and this is an outsider, this is what we're looking for. So, again, go for it.
I might just add, you know, tagging on to what you said, Councilman Anderson, is that, is it really, did the county and the municipal utilities, are they saving money or will they save money by what they found out during this? I, I'm asking the question to anybody that knows the answer.
The utility, and I'm not going to speak for the, I can't really speak for the utility in the Candy Ojai County and how they're going to use the studies that they had. I spoke with the, spoken with the chairman of the Utilities Commission, who felt it was a very good tool for them in outlining a plan and a process for them in terms of restructuring. The county administrator and the county commissioner, county commissioner Madsen, who spoke about this, also thought it was a very good tool for them and would assist them going forward in some restructuring and some changing, and some changes they, they would like that they will be making.
Just a thought, after giving this further review, and we talked about it for quite a while, the council, I value everybody's opinion. There's no bad opinion here. They're all good valuable points. A wait-and-see attitude, if we did that, people would probably accuse us of maybe a do-nothing mentality. But what would be wrong with us waiting a little while? Maybe it'd be three months, four months, two months, six months, till we see what the results of the MUC and what they're going to be implementing, or what the county is going to be doing, and then see what the expenses are, if this cost savings are really there. In the meantime, maybe we should be also, as a council, challenging staff or challenging ourselves to specifically come up with ideas and outlines we want them to consider and, and look at every different area and direct which areas we feel. We all have a consensus of some things we think, or individually might think are, are things we need to change, but we've never really done it because it's going to ensure, involve a lot of changes and, and discussion, and some of it might be controversial, but we need to come up and say, hey, these are what we need addressed. Then hire Springstead after we see the performance of the other two entities that were reviewed and come back with it. You know, we've waited this long. I, I hate to say, I'm in favor of, I'm in favor of it, but Councilman Christensen, I just want to say, when you said twenty thousand dollars to fit, fix our streets versus this, boy, you caught me hook, line, and sinker there on that, because I've spoken against that for quite a few years, spending money and not repairing our streets, and they are falling apart. I would much rather be put into crack seal in an overlay or, or anything else. So I'm speaking against this right now, and if we want to bring it back to committee, that's fine, but we have a recommendation, a motion, and a second, and whatever happens, happens. I just wanted to say my piece. I didn't vote on the, the issue at the council, or at the committee meeting either. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Just one comment, Mr. Mayor, if I may. We spent a hundred thousand dollars on the bar engineering report. I know we've done a few small things to attack these storm water problems that we have, but if I'm not mistaken, it's probably sitting on a shelf right now, too.
Well, I, I just think it'd be a real mistake not to do this, I, right now. I mean, with, with the county just having done it, the MUC just done it, I think it's going to be invaluable, again, the outside vision of how we operate, how we do business. I, I just think it would be in error to not do it.
Councilman, I'd like to make a comment to that, is that, would this council have the guts to make a decision if it was against their will? I mean, I, I'm serious, I mean, as far as the council, would you have the guts to make a decision if it was something that you may be opposed to otherwise, other than cost? I put the question to this council? Because that's what you're probably going to be, you know, obviously, they're going to find things that can be corrected, that we can do better, but would we have the foresight or the guts to make those necessary changes?
Mr. Mayor, I'd rather use the words intestinal fortitude than guts, but I agree with what you're saying.
Well, that's better than what I was going to say, so. Go ahead, Councilman Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, you know, there, there are things that might be difficult for us, but if we're not going to take any of the recommendations, whatever they are, then why are we doing it? I mean, I, I think we have to recognize that we're not perfect, and there are things that are going to be pointed out, not only opportunities, but things that need to be changed perhaps. We need, this is just absolutely an overbrainer in my mind, and I'm flabbergasted that we're having this much discussion on it.
I guess this is a motion. Should we call further questions? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no.
No.
Let's have a roll call. Councilman Amin?
No.
Councilman Anderson?
Aye.
Councilman Christensen?
No.
Councilman Reese?
Aye.
Councilman Blake?
Aye.
Councilman Baggert?
No.
Councilman Dachan?
No.
Councilman Johnson?
No.
Three to five. Three ayes, five nays.
Okay, so the motion fails.
Yes. We're moving on. I, I hopefully, not to downplay any of the discussion, I just want to say, I hope that we can all come to an agreement, because this is something we need to do. We do need to do it, but we'll bring it back at Labor Relations again to discuss some different strategies. Item number four, current review of overtime for special events. I asked Ms. Stevens to put together a review of all departments' overtime costs and, of course, overtime costs and special events. We do that for the last two to three years, and Ms. Stevens was going to be describing the way in which overtime is normally managed and incurred. It's just something that we're going to review as a committee. Item number five is full council, was, that was for information only. Item number five was a full council involved in labor contract negotiations. We stated that Councilmember Christensen had asked to review the manner in which the city of Willmar conducts labor negotiations. Excuse me. Ms. Stevens stated the city council holds a workshop to establish overall parameters, and then the Labor Relations Committee provides oversight and guidance to the city administrator and labor attorney, currently Frank Madden, to conduct the actual negotiations. Ms. Stevens stated that all proposed settlements are reviewed by the Labor Relations Committee and recommended for approval by this, to the city council, and all labor agreements require action by the full council, and this has been the practice prior to her being with the city. Ms. Stevens also provided information from approximately ten other regional centers, only one of which involved council members in the negotiating team, only one of those did. Ms., Mr. Reese questioned why the discussion was being held when the council, city council had discussed and voted on this issue back in October of 2011. I did comment that it was my opinion, which it, this is not the minutes, but I, I think my opinion should be stated here also. My opinion at that time was I, I appreciate and, and, and would like to hear everybody's, any council's person's position on this, and if it needs to come back to the committee again, I have no problem talking about it. And that's why it was brought up. Mr. Anderson stated that he did not know what the city would gain by changing the process, and he had no concerns regarding the objectivity of the city administrator to conduct negotiations. Mr. Johnson, our councilperson, stated that he did not envision full council participation in the process, but he could see value in some council participation. He stated that it would be an option to have participation, and my suggestion was maybe to have the mayor appoint one or two people to sit in. Ms. Stevens expressed her concerns regarding a consistent negotiating team and adding another layer in the process, stating that if a change is made, her preference would be to have some participation or someone participate from the Labor Relations Committee. The committee just decided to have further discussion with the full council tonight when all members could be present. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I would like to, I was going to, at the length of the meeting, I was going to set this aside, but I think we need to deal with it right now, and I think it's a no-brainer. So I would like to make a motion that we have a, the mayor appoint one or two people to further negotiation, labor negotiation meetings, and that the strategies of those individuals and what their role would be, would be outlined by the Labor Relations Committee.
I'll second that for discussion.
A motion has been made and seconded for the mayor to appoint two negotiators for to negotiate with the city administrator.
That's correct. One to two is what my motion was, Mr. Mayor.
And let's open that for discussion?
Yes, please.
I'll discuss it if no one else will.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me. I, I agree with Mr. Amin, that I think it's a no-brainer. The years past, I've been to some of the negotiation sessions, and it's, it's the city administrator on one side of the table and three to five to six members of the union or their representatives on the other side of the table. They will caucus once in a while, and she has to leave the room, he or she. The administrator has no one to caucus with, nobody to bounce ideas off of, and sometimes decisions, decisions need to be made immediately or within the hour, within the thirty-five minutes, or whatever it takes. And it just makes so much sense to me to have, if I was administrator, I'd want two or three council people there with me, and, and probably the mayor. Don't forget, this is the mayor's budget, and it's about eighty percent of our operating budget. It's, it's the biggest expense we have. We're spending two, almost two million dollars a year on health insurance and life insurance for employees. We're spending more than the county and the school spends on their health insurance, almost twice as much as what they spend. Some of these things have to change, and speaking of change, the prior discussion, we've been trying to bring about change, the Dachans, the Christiansens, the Johnsons, the Amin's, and nothing can, seems to happen. So, so I, I am in favor of this, but I, I would, I would say that she should, she, the city administrator should have probably the mayor and two to three council members, probably from the Labor Relations Committee. You got to remember, folks, this only happens every two to three years. We're not talking about a lot of time here. I mean, and this year's been a little different because we're in arbitration with LELS, and we still have the department heads to go with, but I, I understand the others two have agreed, I mean, we've, to their contracts, is that not?
You voted on those contracts in April.
Okay, so they're done deal. Again, every two to three years, and I would feel much better having two or three and the mayor present at those. I, I need to address a couple of comments that were made at the committee meeting. One was that a council member questioned why the discussion was being held again when the council discussed and voted on the same issue in October 2011. We've done that in the past. I think you'll all recall, I believe it was the last year that we had decided not to rehire two policemen. Full council voted on it. Guess what? Several months later, it's brought up again, tie a vote, and the mayor breaks the tie. So this isn't something that's out of the ordinary. We've done it in the past. I, I just think it's wise for the council to participate in this labor negotiations so that there's more transparency, that the public is able to see what, what's in these contracts, and, and speaking of that, they should be on our website, in full on the website for people to read, like the school has, the school district. I, I would say instead of one or two, Steve, it should be two. It should be two council persons plus the mayor.
Mayor, I just want to make one comment. Ron, I, I appreciate you, your steadfastness on this issue, and I think the council, since I, since I was on years ago, and many of people have been on longer than I have on the council, we have been shunning our responsibilities, and our responsibility should be in the negotiations. Somebody, some representative, whether it be the mayor or the council, but we could just can't sit back and shuffle it all off in the city administrative, we come back and say yes and no. I think we need to be involved with the process. Now, we are, but I think it's also important that our faces be public with the employees and sit down and talk. That's what it comes down to, and I think we're, we're missing out on that. And I think we, we probably see a different perspective inside from their viewpoint if we were in on the negotiation sessions. We have our strategies, we have our guidelines, I don't want to hinder it, but I think with the right group of people, the right individuals, we could at least be more involved in the process and do the job I think we should be doing all along, rather than shuffling off to an attorney and our city administrator. I do, Mr. Collins, want to say that it isn't just the Johnsons or Andersons, it's all these guys here that have good ideas, every last one of them. It's not just any four people. All these council people, I respect. That's why I'm bringing this issue back up, because you, you asked for it to be brought back up again, and I'd do that for anybody, and, and hopefully, everybody would do that for each, each individual. I just think it's time to, to try it, and if it works, and there's no harm done, I think it's part of our process as the fiduciaries of, of this expenditure to, to be involved in the process. And there's pros and cons on both sides, and I'm going to hear them all, and I just want to express my opinion on it. And, and I value everybody's opinion, because this is the time to talk about it right now. We've got the juices going, and we've got everybody's, everybody's awake, so I think we should resolve it and put it to bed one way or another.
Thank you, Councilman. City administrator, would you care to comment on some of the things that you suggested to me, the downside to that?
I think this is a city council decision, and the city council needs to make that decision.
Thank you. Councilman Anderson?
I think, I think one of the things that's really, really important that, that we heard from the city that has city council members on their negotiating team is whoever that is needs to remember they're representing the council, not their individual opinions. So you have to go with whatever we have established, and, and that, you have to go with that, like it or not like it, that's the way it is, and, and that has to be that way.
I agree.
So the motion on the table is for two council people?
One or two.
The motion is for one or two council people appointed by the mayor.
Councilman Amin, could we specifically say two instead of one or two?
I'm, I'm open to suggestions. I just got the motion going to get everybody's input. I don't know how that's going to change things, two, one, two, or three.
I mean, two is a definite number. One or two was, which is it? Follow me?
One or two, yeah. But my motion was for one or two. I think that would be adequate.
And the mayor's?
That's totally up to the council. I just threw the motion out. There can be amended if you care, if you care to do that.
The mayor could also appoint himself to be one of those members.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess I fail to see why we would want to put policy people on our negotiating team. We have an attorney hired to do our negotiating. We have the city administrators there to make sure he stays within the parameters that are set by the, by the labor committee. As the labor committee sets parameters for our negotiator for every contract he negotiates. So, I don't know why you want to put policy people on that negotiating committee. I think that's no place for them. I think it should be totally left up to our negotiating attorney, along with our city administrator, to actually go down and go out and sit with the union representation when you're in that, in the contract negotiations. I see absolutely no point to have any policy person there.
Thank you. Councilman Reese? Further discussion? Councilman Christensen?
Councilmember Reese and DeBlick, this is the largest part of our operating budget, almost 80 percent. I and the other three council members who are not on the labor committee have very, 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 very limited input on any of those contracts. If I would have had input on these contracts years ago, in the past two years and four years, we wouldn't be paying 6 percent on the people's, putting money aside, it's deferred comp, I believe. Presently, all contracts, I believe, Reed, you can take one hour of vacation. It has ratcheted down from one week to five days to four days to three to two to four hours, six hours, and now it's down to one hour. What's next? One half hour? 15 minutes? Some of these things just don't, they don't meet the common sense level. Personally, I think we should read these contracts from beginning to end, right here, public television, so the public knows what's in it. We don't put them on the website. We come to vote on the changes in the contract, and we get one page with four changes on it. We should have the entire contract, redlined, blue-lined, yellow highlighted, so we read the entire thing. To not be a part of that, that's shirk on our job. That's shirk on our duty. We were elected to do this. I think it was Councilman Duncan earlier stated, one of our duties, our priorities is financial. And we are not meeting our duty on that aspect of it by helping out, and let's face it, two, three heads are better than one when it comes to negotiating. I mean, that's why there's five, six across the table from our attorney and our administrator. I think it's a no-brainer. I can't see not doing it. Every two to three years, we're not talking about, you know, months and meetings and months. It's just every two to three years, these contracts are up, and the public needs to know what's in them. I mean, we're in arbitration with LELS right now. I'm not sure where it's going. I don't know what the demands are. I don't know if the public knows what the demands are, what they're looking for. I haven't seen it on the website. I beg of you to reconsider. This is one of our most important jobs.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Go ahead.
One thing I do need to correct is this, the comments that there has been an attempt, certainly, but there appears to be some comments, there's been an attempt by the city administrator's office to keep information from the city council. I would just like to say that I strenuously deny that. We have made every effort to make contracts available to the city council members. The changes our proposed are exactly that. The changes that are proposed, that means that the rest of the contract remains the same. If any council member does not have a copy of the contracts and would like another copy, they have been distributed previously. We are happy to provide those, but I'm sorry that I just, I cannot allow that statement to go unchallenged.
Councilman Reese?
She beat me to it, but I've been on the council for many years. I've got a three-ring binder that has a copy of all the CBAs for all of our collective bargaining groups. Had it for years, and all I do is replace the collective bargaining agreement each time it's redone. And the one-sheet synopsis was mentioned by, at the open forum. And again, just like our city administrator said, it's the changes only. We know what the agreements say. It's the changes only. It's not trying to hide anything from anybody.
Point of order, Mr. Mayor. Can we get back to the motion, pertinent to the motion? The contracts have nothing to do with the motion on the table.
I think it has everything to do with it.
Well, yes, the contracts do have everything to do with it, but as far as whether or not we're getting copies, I don't think that has anything to do with what we're talking about. They all have been available to me, so I don't know how that statement can be made either, but I agree.
Kevin, do you have a recap of what the motion actually is?
It's to have the mayor appoint one or two council members to the negotiating team, and that team takes their direction from the Labor Relations Committee.
Is this a motion or a roll call?
Standard motion.
All those in?
No, I got to understand that. That sounds, that sounds like the council members are going to be in the negotiation team. That's what it sounds like to me.
Could you read that again?
To have the mayor appoint one or two council members to the negotiating team, and that team to take their direction from the Labor Relations Committee.
Now, that sounds like the council members are going to be the committee.
Could you include, along with the city administrator? Would that make sense to do then?
The city administrator's on the team.
Or I think that's, I mean, I don't want to speak for Councilmember Amen. Perhaps he needs to clarify his intent.
I guess my intent was to have them added to the negotiating team, above the attorney and city administrator, not to just have us do the negotiating. So, we would just be added. If we don't like this, guys, we can always change it.
Can I answer your question?
I believe I said with parameters too, and I believe that parameters, you interpreted, Kevin, was correctly, the parameters set by the Labor Relations Negotiating Strategic Planning Sessions, and that has full council participation.
Didn't we do that this year?
Pardon me?
Didn't we do that this year?
Yes, we did. Yes, we did.
We had a full council work session to discuss that.
Do you have the minutes or the recording of it?
I'm sure that we do. If it was a duly advertised meeting, it would have been recorded. The bargaining sessions began long before my tenure. The contracts were expired in 2010, and I believe that session probably was held in late 2010.
Do we call for the questions? All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no.
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 I think the ayes have it.
With that, I believe that's the last of the minutes. Mr. Mayor, I would want to highly recommend to anybody that understand this on our RAC8 or media that they can hear the discussion we had at this, at the Labor Relations Committee meeting, if you look on our website and listen to the minutes. Thank you, and to file the minutes, Mr. Mayor.
Second. The motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Labor Relations Committee report for July 11, 2012. Discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to make sure that the statements by Hersher and Sullivan are added to these minutes as they were handed out in our Friday memo, but not, they attended the meeting, and I only expected their comments to be part of the minutes. So, I would request that we add them on to these minutes so they're there in the record. Does that take a motion or consensus or?
I'm not sure.
I believe that's, I thought they probably were already part of the minutes, so I was assuming that they were maybe all or not included.
They were handed out in the packet.
Yes, yes, but they can be public, definitely. Hopefully, will be.
Does that take a motion, Kevin?
No, sir. We'll just add it.
Thank you.
Find them and add it.
We have a motion on the table to file the minutes of the Labor Relations Committee report for July 11, 2012. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed say no. That motion carries. We'll go into the Community Development Committee report for July 12, 2012. Councilman Duncan?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We had five items that were discussed on July the 12th. Item number one was public comments, and there were no public comments offered at the meeting. Item number two, Economic Development Commission updates, and that is for information only. And Mr. Mayor, Mr. Renquist, Steve Renquist, the EDC director, is present, and he gave us a very comprehensive report, and would you allow him to speak tonight?
Can you do 10 minutes?
He's smiling. He sat there that long. Thank you, Councilmember Duncan, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. In view of the late hour and the fact that this report is not looking for approval, it's merely informative, if it's convenient for the council, I can come again at the next meeting, or I can do it most expeditiously. What is your pleasure?
Let's do most expeditiously.
Most expeditiously? All right. We have the EDC, not quite one week ago, had its annual planning meeting. At that, we typically review the five-year goals, and what I'll do is, I'll review those now with you. You have written copies of the goals, some of the specific items that we're working on, and then also some of the specific committee goals. In the, in the light blue numbered, obviously, starting with one, you'll see the EDC goals. And I'll go through them most quickly. Continue efforts to maintain and expand businesses in Candy Ojai County. This is a recognition that the business community that we have now has made their choice to be here in Candy Ojai County and deserve all of our care and attention. We know that 80 percent of new jobs and businesses will come from those businesses and those people that are here right now, so we need to show our attention to it. You'll see subsets to that business modeling. We're doing that right now. We got a $100,000 planned and grant, and we're doing some most exciting things that we'll be reporting back to you more on that later. We talked about opportunities for business growth. You remember, it was a little over a year ago now, the city and the EDC both pledged monies to help BN Santa Fe on a federal stimulus money grant that later was turned down by the BN Santa Fe. I'm moving to the backside of that first page, and I should comment, the green print is my comments, the pinkish print is Gene's comments. As a rule, we kind of divide up our duties at the EDC with me then having overall oversight responsibilities. Okay, we talk about continue to promote and enhance Candy Ojai County's and Wilmers business-friendly environment. We're known as a business-friendly community. You've heard me report, and it's true, that in the Office of Management and Budget, using U.S. Census data, compares micropolitain communities throughout the whole United States. A micropolitain community is designed as an area between 10,000 and 50,000 people, and by that they mean the extended Wilmers slash Candy Ojai County community. In the U.S. survey, there's 576 of these micropolitain communities. We are ranked 70th. We are the highest-ranked county that has only one principal city in all of Minnesota, and there's only one area, Rice County, with Fairbowl and Northfield, that are ranked above us. We're quite proud of that. We go into some of the biz, we haven't had time to update this report since our meeting was only a week ago, but you see some of the updated figures. Unemployment rates were somewhere in the, in the 4 percent range, low fours, high threes, depending on who you're talking about. On the bottom of page three, you'll see one of our goals is 100 percent broadband and cell phone coverage of the entire county by the end of 2015. This is one of the areas that we're working on. We're making some progress on it. If you go ahead and flip that page over to what would be page four, you'll see item two, assist Rice Memorial Hospital and strengthening its position as a regional hospital. This has been a position of some frustration for us, not that we're in any way doubting that Rice Memorial Hospital is a regional hospital and continues to strengthen its position, but it's some frustration that the EDC, just because it would like to be helpful, hasn't necessarily been able to be helpful to our very strong regional medical community here in, here in Wilmers. We are working on some things, some of the things we'd hoped to be able to be working on, we haven't been able to do. Some talk we're working on in a downtown-located, extended to a hospital. This is a topic to come, and I know there's some dispute on this. The EDC supports a concept of a sales tax parking ramp, a sales tax paid parking ramp in the downtown area. I know there's considerable conversation with that, but I'll just put it on the table. The EDC does support that. We're also working for other ways in doctor recruitment and in recruitment of entire wings of, you know, an orthopedic clinic, this type of thing for the, for the hospital, also finding greater ways of the, you know, our medical community is much more than Rice Hospital. ACMC is huge, family practice is significant. We've got a whole host of optical, dental, chiropractic, other holistic healers in the area. Number three, fill additional 50 percent of Midwest Technology Campus. We are now at just over 28 companies and over 350 employees out on that campus. The updated figures, in technology and largely technology-supporting businesses, we were able to get our first medical device company out here in this past year. We were able to raise a million dollars locally in private investment money for that facility or for that medical device company. We've now, we were very instrumental in the opening of the Mid-Central Research and Outreach Center. This is an office, a commercialization of intellectual property. We have, we have what we claim to be the country's largest privately-owned and operated techno park. We now have our state's largest university with a center for the commercialization of intellectual property, which will only prove to be a magnet for that large privately-owned techno park. I am a public employee. I have no trouble saying the secret to this is privately-owned and operated. Moving forward, we're looking for other ways. We know that the university tends to believe, build it, and they will come. That won't work with this Mid-Central Research and Outreach Center. We're working other ways in filling the Midwest Technology Campus, identifying recruiting businesses, assisting in financing opportunities for new businesses that do start up, helping the recruitment of key employees for the facility. Also, on the bottom of page five, you'll see we mentioned the Animal Science Venture Forum. We started it last fall. I can't say we started it, the campus started it, and we assisted. It was very successful and was profitable in its first year, which is almost unheard of. Did I happen to say it was privately-owned and operated? It was. Number four, on what would be the top of page six, develop new opportunities for cooperation with similar agencies. Wilmers and Candy Ojai County is as strong as we are, do not stand alone. We're trying to create a biosciences corridor between St. Cloud and Worthington with us. Well, we're not dead-centered geographically, but with us centered on it, and we hope to do that by 2015, and we're working on creating a renewable resources corridor. Some feel the bloom is off the rose in renewable resources. We don't think that. Perhaps there's some other opportunities in energy production right now, but there's a whole host of bioplastics and other opportunities in renewable resources. One of the ones that you know we're working on is the production of vanhydrosammonia out of ag biomass. At a cost that's 40 percent less than market cost. Okay, we move on down, assess knowledge-based relationships. Are we prepared locally? Is our educational system to include our post-secondary system? Is it putting? is it putting out the type of employees that the companies that we want to attract? And we're working with, and our educational systems are very willing and eager to work with us. Moving on down, you know that two regional extension offices were closed and consolidated here in Willmar. We did not, we did not like to hasten our reputation as being somewhat of a predator, but unfortunately, the strong survive, and we happen to be the strong. As we move into the U of M Office of Commercialization of Intellectual Property, we want to get that started here. We want the Institute of Renewable Energy and Technology. We also have a Institute for Renewable Energy and the Economy, all looking and starting here on our campus. Moving quickly, moving five, a successful commercialization of two renewable energy projects and expansion of three value-added add projects. We talked about the anhydrosimonia. We're working on a fuel cell project. You've heard at the last legislative session that there was talk about the dairy research and training and consumer education facility. That'll be a new university and state-owned facility that we hope to get started in Candy Ojai County in conjunction with the Ridgewater Outstanding Dairy Training Program. You know about our turkey research and development facility, and we're also working with local companies on turkey litter combustion, something other than what they're doing west of here in Benson. Another area of frustration is the increase in airport utilization. We haven't given up on anything, but we found that you can't just click your fingers and make the airport be utilized greater than what it is. It's a wonderful facility. The Willmar City Council was indeed far-sighted and bold when it moved ahead and improved that facility and made the new movement. We expect that the old facility is going to be a wonderful industrial park that'll serve this area for years to come. There's been some hiccups along the way, but there's no reason to be pessimistic that we will get this done. One of the things we're working on now is with the Metropolitan Airport Commission on using this as an excess cargo facility. Mr. Mayor, I took more than my 10 minutes. I apologize, but that's quick by my standards. Questions, sir?
Thank you for a great report. Are there questions?
Questions, Mayor?
Councilman Dockin?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Steve, thank you for coming and for the good, quick report. Tell us some more about the Midwest Technology Campus. Your form indicates that we have 28 businesses, 327 employees, and it's about 55% filled. Do we have any other projections over the next three or four years for?
We will, the Midwest Technology Campus within, well, I'll be cautious and say within another five years, we'll have 800 employees. I don't know exactly the number of businesses that it'll have, because that's speculative on startup businesses and existing businesses. But it will more than replace the number of jobs that were out there, especially at the end, from the regional treatment facility. It's opening up vistas in a brand-new economy out here in west-central Minnesota, particularly Willmar and of course Candy Ojai County. And it's, the day will come, maybe after we're all gone, but the day will come that they'll talk about that in the same breath they talk about the railroad opening up this area 100 years ago. That's the impact of that Midwest Technology Campus.
Thank you. And, Mr. Mayor, it's fair also to say that Councilmember Christianson and Anderson serve as councilmembers on this activity with Mr. Renquist. And there's a good article that Ann Holta wrote on the priorities starting to take shape for the ADC. July 13th, it was in the West Central Tribune.
Can you give us a little information on the Lee, anyway, is the vice president?
Lee Byberg.
Byberg.
The Norwegian gentleman that I believe is running for Congress again. He does an outstanding job, and not many people know that he was instrumental when push came to shove in that campus even being a reality. I don't know what exactly you might be looking for.
Isn't he the head of some human vaccine in St. Paul?
Oh, I'm sorry. The epitopics, the animal and poultry vaccine company, highly successful, the only E. coli-approved vaccine in all of the United States, by the way, has a spin, not spinoff, has a subsidiary called Centurion that makes human vaccine, makes it in the same way, well, the same mannerisms that their animal and poultry vaccine makes. All of our blood has protein in it. Disease organisms attach to that protein. This is called a protein inhibitor and refuses to allow the disease organism to attach to the protein. Gee, seems pretty simple, doesn't it? But I'm sure it's not. Having said that, we're working hard to try and attract that Centurion company from the Umore Park area of the U to the, to Willmar. And senior leadership at the Willmar Poultry Company is empathetic to our quest. We're trying to get that done. Probably, one of the reasons that that campus was founded is to be able to help the companies attract executive talent in the scientific field. And one of the things that's still holding back bringing Centurion down here is the highest-level biologist and other terms that I would only embarrass myself. They're having trouble attracting them and getting them to move to Willmar.
As I understand it, the University of Minnesota being here now will help that situation.
The general term is a rising tide lifts all ships. That tide can be lifted by Mississippi rivers flowing in, and it can be lifted by creeks flowing in. Every one of them make a little bit of a difference in the general level of that fate. And as that, they all come in, they all help raise the, they all help raise the tide, and that would be a very significant thing in creating the success. We talk about creating the environment in which success could happen, and that certainly would be part of that.
Thank you. Further questions?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mr. Renquist, you had mentioned, I'm going to go back to item 1B, where you talked about the railroad and that they were looking for a grant to the Western Interceptor Line and the spur into the airport. Now, there was, you said the railroad BFN was opposed to pursuing a grant for that?
Actually--
I would think that would be a great project for them, because that would move trains in and out of the city more efficiently. I just don't see why they would oppose that.
I would have to have BNNSF personnel here to accurately answer that. I think the requirements of the stimulus money were such that required the railroad to allow, at least in this area, some part of the control under the federal government. And as you know, the railroad is very independent. It isn't going to allow any governmental entity to have control over their operations. We were looking, I'm sure everybody in the room knows, Mindot has bought right away for a bypass on the west side of Willmar. It was going to be on that side. We wanted to use the stimulus money also to bring a rail line into the old airport industrial park. Of course, at that time, we thought we'd have possession of that, so maybe it's good in a way that that didn't happen. And there was even some talk about a rail spur even heading out towards the airport in case we could ever use that airport for freight, excess freight from the metropolitan area. The BNNSF, just as quickly as it started, just made the decision, no, they weren't going to do it, because we were told they weren't going to succumb to the demands that the stimulus package would have placed on them in terms of local control. I can tell you, there is some interest. A meeting has been held again with railroad personnel that once again is dusting off the program, though not using stimulus dollars. They're so interested in it that they would perhaps do it without use of stimulus dollars.
So that is not, or you say, a dead issue?
It's not dead, no.
It's still something that is being looked at?
It actually makes a lot of sense. Traffic, you know, it certainly wouldn't, I don't see a diminishment in employment of railroad employment in the Willmar area. I know some people are concerned about that, and justifiably so. But I think that there would be some traffic that was from the north and west and going to the south and west would never have to come into Willmar, which would also help with safety and quiet concerns in the inner city as well. It could perhaps create an environment where position us for light rail traffic, because one of the reasons that stopped us is trains had to come in, stop, reorientate themselves, and then leave again. And light rail doesn't, light rail passenger especially doesn't like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Appreciate your patience.
Appreciate the opportunity to address the council. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Item number three is 2011, 2012, construction review and it's for information only. Building official Randy Cardell presented a comparison of January through June construction data for the years 2011 and 2012, and there is an attachment. It was noted that the total number of permits in 2012 was up slightly, but the total construction value was up significantly over 2011. The committee requested year-end information for 2008 through 2011, so a longer-term comparison can be drawn on construction activities. Item number four, 201 Havana Street, status update, and this is a motion. Staff reported on a recent court action that allowed the city to demolish the house at 201 Havana Street Northeast. The owner of the mortgage company did not appear at the hearing, and the city was granted its request for demolition effective July 1, 2012. After assembling costs to have the house demolished and the basement backfilled, it was the recommendation of staff that the fire department burn the house as a training exercise. Doing so would come at a significant savings to the city. The committee was reminded that the city is responsible for paying the costs of demolition and will have to seek reimbursement from the owner or the mortgage holder. It is more likely that the cost will be added to the tax bill as an assessment to the property. Following discussion, a motion was made and seconded for the following, to allow the fire department to burn the house as a training exercise, and I'd make that motion.
Second?
A motion has been made and seconded to burn the house, to allow the fire department to burn the house at 201 Havana Street as a training exercise. Discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries.
Item number five, again, was project updates, and it was for information only, and it is part of this document. Item six, miscellaneous for information only. Councilmember Amen inquired about the marketing of Garfield and Lincoln Schools for economic development purposes. Mary Annish raised the subject of hiring a city health inspector due to complaints about restaurant inspections. It was explained that the county licenses eating establishments and that the annual inspections are required and conducted by the county. And I believe he indicated that was the city sanitary, or the county sanitarium. Is that not correct?
Yes, true, yes.
Unless there are further questions or questions, I would move to file these minutes.
Second?
A motion has been made and seconded to file the minutes of the Community Development Committee report for July 12, 2012. Discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. That motion carries. Consideration of the premise permit for the 100 Yard Club. Kevin, did you want to explain that to us?
Mary Annish, members of the council, you have before you an application for a premise permit at the Oaks at Eagle Creek for the 100 Yard Club. They will be conducting just about every lawful gambling activity allowed. They've checked all of them, from pull tabs, pull tabs and dispensing device, bar bingo, tip boards, paddle wheel, electronic pull tabs, and electronic bingo. This will be a fundraiser for various sporting activities. The law has changed. We used to do the premise permits every two years, and we haven't had a few for a handful of years, because they changed the law to have just the initial premise permit approved by the council. After that, the state automatically renews them. So this is the first time something's been in the Oaks for a long time. I think there was something, the Blue Line Club, half a decade ago. But the 100 Yard Club is a nonprofit in good standing, and the staff's recommendation that we adopt a resolution approving the premise permit.
So move?
Second?
A motion has been made and seconded to approve the resolution for the 100 Yard Club. Discussion? Councilman Tablic?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I guess, Kevin, the 100 Yard Club is what? You say they're a nonprofit club or organization? How are, what's their plans to do with the funds? Disperse them to what and who? Do we have any, I don't see anything in the, anything in the permit or?
Doesn't do that. We have to check the clubs out, because they have to be a nonprofit. It's a domestic nonprofit corporation. Filing date of 4/22/1999, so it's been there 13 years and three months. Must have started back in the old days of Dale Johnson, because their principal address is 331 Southwest, oh, Third Street. I guess it's not. I thought it was Sixth Street. Not sure exactly where that is. But Mike Nybauer, Dave Baker signed it and so forth. The 100 Yard meaning football, so it's more football-driven for the high school sporting activities. And so they lease space at the, will be leasing space at the Oaks.
I guess, so they're raising, the funds will be given to the high school? Is that?
I believe it's the high school football.
The beneficiary of the nonprofit?
It's not listed. It's not limited to that, but by their share, their name, I suspect that's the direction they're going.
Do we ever see a report on how they disperse the funds?
By our other ordinance, all the other agencies turn in a monthly report. We file those. You could come and inspect those and see where they go, and they will be held to the same standard.
Is there further discussion, Kevin? Roll call?
Councilmember Fagerly?
Aye.
Tablic?
Aye.
Reese?
Aye.
Christianson?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Amen?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Dockin?
Aye.
Eight ayes, zero nays.
Then the motion carries. At this time, we go into the council meeting dates. Councilman Reese?
No meeting scheduled.
Councilman Anderson?
No meeting.
No meeting for labor, Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Dockin?
Soon.
July 26, 4:45, Conference Room 1.
Is there any miscellaneous?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. I ask to be excused from the first meeting in August, please.
First meeting in August? Councilman Christianson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Due to some lobbying and some further thought, I will change my vote on the city, the charter commission's vote of, was it vote of, what was it for, Kevin?
Vote of support.
Vote of support. To a yes, from a no. Okay. So when you read it in the paper tomorrow morning, this is no, let it be changed.
Any other, Councilman?
Need to be excused for the first meeting in August.
Second. Motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. We are adjourned. Hmm? Yeah, that's okay. Keep it.